Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Tonight is Tuesday, October 19th. It's about 7:30 PM. Tonight is a planning and zoning special meeting, right? Is this in the special meeting?
No.
Yes, it is. Special meeting. It's a planning zoning special meeting. Tonight, as part of our special meeting, we have a general meeting up front, and then we have a public hearing in the latter half of the meeting. So with that for tonight, we, Jeremy Ginsrigg and myself, in town hall in room 213. And we are also holding this meeting via go-to-meeting virtually as pro-governor's directive that dates back over a year and a half now. So let's get right into it. First item on the agenda, general meeting, is amendment to amendment to landfilling regaining application number 509, right, Reedy, at 43 Hillside Avenue, proposal to modify previous approved plans to locate to the location of the boulder retaining wall. We got a letter from an engineer certifying this, that there's no significant changes in the plan. They moved it a couple of feet. We also got another letter from Darren Ostafine, who's ex-officio member of the board, saying he has no issues with this change. I'm going to ask Jeremy a question first, and then let you take it over. The wording was stone wall, and now they're changing it to a boulder wall. That's the part that I didn't.
I think it's the same thing. The issue here is they've moved the proposed wall five feet to the north, which is basically right on the northern property line. The original plan submitted by Abigail Adams on behalf of Bill Reedy showed that stone wall five feet in from the property line.
Okay.
With, there would be some trees in between. That, we noticed that while they were under construction, and we noted that that was pretty significantly different than what the commission approved. We did refer to Darren Ostafine, professional engineer of Public Works, relative to drainage issues. As you note in his email, he notes that there are no drainage issues as a result of this. My understanding is Mr. Reedy's worked with his neighbor, and the plantings that were supposed to go just north of the wall will go north of the wall, but they will be on the neighbor's property. And so the wall is on the property line. It's not going to really cause impacts to the neighbors to the north, but it was significant enough, we felt it appropriate to bring it back to the commission.
We appreciate that. Thank you. I'm glad to come back to the commission. Commissioners, any questions on this one? Again, it's, this happens a lot where walls get moved and things get moved, and we find out after the fact. Sometimes it's good, and sometimes it's not so good. This one looks like it's okay by me. Jim Ryan, anything? You good with this? No problem. Where is George Riley? You okay with this?
Yeah.
Okay, where's Jeff Ball? Jeff Ball, are you okay with this, sir? Good. Now I gotta find Cara. Cara Gately, you okay? And Jennifer Leahy, if you're on, you're okay? Sounds like Jennifer's okay, and Cara Gately should be okay. Okay, good. Thank you. With that said, I think we're okay. So we take a quick vote?
Yeah, quick vote.
Okay, could we say a vote of hands? Most to approve the request as submitted. Jeff Ball makes the motion. Jim Ryan second said. All in favor? Fantastic.
Yep. What is your?
Four nothing.
Great.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Mr. Reedy, you got your new wall in the right spot. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Next item on the agenda is deliberation possible decisions on the following item. Before I go into these items, I just want to make a quick announcement of things that we're going to be able to do and not be able to do. With regards to the ABELIS application, because we have it, this is a special meeting. We have a bunch of stuff that's going to be done today at Parklands. We're going to delay or postpone the deliberations on ABELIS.
Yeah, we'll try again next week, time permitting.
Okay, so if anybody's here from ABELIS or Baywater Properties or interested in that application, if you don't mind, we're going to postpone that deliberation until next week or the week after.
We'll put it on the agenda if it's on next week. Really depends what else comes up in the interim.
Okay, fantastic.
The commission has two months to make a decision, so there's still time left for the commission to make a decision on it.
Okay. And the other item we're going to put on to next week is 108 Near Water Lane. I think that's an application that was put forth by Wylder Gleason. We're going to delay that one also for a week. And.
Deliver it next week.
Deliverate that one. So that's near 108 Near Water Lane. It's proposed subdivision. We're going to put that one to next week. And then we're probably going to land up putting the approvals to next week, but that's okay.
The minutes.
The minutes, the minutes, yes, I'm sorry. So we can just fly through. So if you're here for ABELIS over at, what's the other thing? 26 East Lane, we're going to postpone that. And if you're here for 108 Near Water Lane, we're going to postpone that till next week. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, deliberation possible decisions on the following. Coastal site plan review number 256B is a boy. Flood dam revision application number 287B is a boy. Landfilling regaining application number 513 Noah and Kristen Charney at Nine Butler's Island Road, propose to construct, in addition to the residence, construct a patio over and a pool over an existing patio and storm, install storm water management system before related site development, perform related regrading to the property and perform related site foam activities within regulated areas. This is a big piece of land that's over near Token E Club.
Yeah.
They're proposing of putting a new pool back there. We got a draft resolution. Yep, it's got my chair president, where they propose to put a pool in the backyard and a new house. And we have a draft resolution in our packets, and every commissioner should have it already. The thing that I just want to make sure that everyone recognizes is, in our town, it's just a little bit of a side note. We've had a lot of flooding issues with different spots and houses being built in flooding issues. If you look on this proposal on page two, in item two, it says, "The northern portion of subject property is within a flood zone. It's a VE 15 and AE 13," which means that's flood levels, which is 15 feet above sea level and 13 feet above sea level. All the proposed improvements are located outside the flood zone. This is a draft resolution to approve the application as submitted, but this again is owner beware. You're building next to a flood zone. Yes, your property may not be in a flood zone, and the improvements are not in the flood zone. But these people that are building this know the risks that they have. Okay, my other question just for Jeremy was, item number three, received an email from DEEP. It's included in the record, but it doesn't say that they had no issues on it. Do you remember if they had issues at all? Because the sentence after that says that the harbor master had no issues with the application. I'm sure if they had issues, you would have dumped it, right?
I believe that they had no issues, but let me go check for two seconds. I don't, unfortunately, didn't, don't have the file, but let me check real quick. Nine Butler's Island.
Yep, okay, I want to keep going. If you remember, item 10, there's going to be no blasting at the property. We're allowing them, they said they need two or three days of chipping for hole ramming. That comes up later, where we allow them two or three days. We allow maximum three days for hole ramming. And then we have the standard stuff that talks about they have to put everything in there. Any commissioners have any questions, comments, scripters, errors, any of these items?
No, I just want to note for the record, the September 21, 2021 email from Jamie Sadoriak at DEEP. She just notes that the septic system is in close proximity to the coastal jurisdiction line. The applicant shall not damage or use machinery below this coastal jurisdiction line. Needs approval for such, et cetera, but she had no issues with it, no. That's why we wrote it the way we did. It was basic. No concerns, basically.
Fantastic. There's nothing material that to.
Nothing material would be a good way to phrase it.
Do you want to put that in, no material issues?
Yeah, I can put that in.
Okay, we'll do that. So on item number three, it says included, that email's included as part of the record, and the DEEP had no material issues. Okay. Back to the commission. Any questions, comments, scripters, errors, typos that they found in this thing? Cara Gately?
Sorry, I found a question. Well, actually, it's a question. It's not, nothing about errors or typos or anything. But maybe can someone just explain or just go over the difference or the lap or the sound and disruption difference between, what is it, ramming and? Yeah, and then what people can do if they think there's blasting and they sent or they have concerns when that is going on or so that they can know about it, neighbors who may be affected. I think that's an important point to clarify, just for the record.
You can be quick, sir. The first item is care of blasting is dynamite, where they set off dynamite and it's, they go just.
Right, they need a permit from the fire marshal for blasting. So the fire marshal will come and supervise, and it's, they give notice and buzzers. Hey, we're about to blast, and it's, hole ramming is like pounding a table over and over. So certainly, some people find blasting a little more
nerve-wracking.
nerve-wracking, but it doesn't occur all day, whereas hole ramming is more all day. It usually lasts longer, but is not as, I don't want to say powerful is the wrong word, but certainly the fire marshal is brought in to supervise blasting, and a blasting permit is needed. No permit from the fire marshal is needed for hole ramming. So that's really the difference there.
There is a big notification provision relative to blasting.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what it is.
There's less of a notification provision program. But we always keep it down to a couple, three days, and that's exactly what we did here. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Cara. George Riley, questions, sir?
Or a scripter's error, not to be a smart aleck, but number nine of the stormwater management says the commission finds that if implemented property, the proposed site development, blah, blah, blah.
All right.
Really ought to be properly, and I, I don't know if anybody else in this crowd might read the New York Times, but there was actually an article today on a Supreme Court case that had exactly that misspelling that was caused a major bruhaha, so I wanted you to avoid that for sure.
Thank you, George. I read that and underlined it, but didn't catch it. Any other questions? Jeff Ball, give me a thumbs up. There you go. Jim Ryan, thumbs up, good. And Cara, Jennifer, she's good, okay? With that said, I'd intention of motion to approve as amended. George Riley makes the motion. Jim Ryan makes the second. All those in favor?
Five to zero.
Five to nothing. Fantastic. Thank you, everybody. That goes one down. Two down, okay. Next item on the agenda, we're going to do deliberations only on the following items. The first one is coastal site plan review number 362. Flood dam revision application number 415. Landfilling regaining application number 515. 51 Five Mile River Road LLC.
91.
91, Jesus, sorry about that. 91 FMR LLC at 91 Five Mile River Road. This is a new house. It's proposed to be built next to the Nerrut River. Five Mile River, wow. One of the, the neighbor next door wanted to make sure that the bushes that they're going to paint in that one corner doesn't block his view. It's a pretty straightforward house. We approved the house next door to it. Nothing really jumped off the page on us. Again, this is another house that they're building near a flood zone. Part of the land is in a flood zone. There's, is there smart vents on one of the walls? I think there's smart vents on the garage.
Yeah, the house is just barely outside of the flood zone. The pool was in the flood zone and a little bit of the patio next to the pool. And some of the regrading and the drainage system was to the eastern part of the property.
Yeah. So again, you know, townspeople just, we approved, people apply to build in flood zones. They end up getting engineered properly and getting approved. But we can't tell them not to, that's for sure. Any questions, comments on this one? It was pretty straightforward. Looked like a good application.
We can, we can have something ready for next week.
Everyone's okay with it? Just nod your heads. And we'll instruct staff to write up a positive approval to that one.
Yep.
Okay. The next one is coastal site plan review number 363. Flood dam expansion application number 169A is an apple. Landfilling and regrading application number 55A is an apple. John Daleeter at 32 Plymouth Road. This is a house that's in the bay on the end of a cul-de-sac street. It's an over-oversized lot for a house in the bay. They are proposing to build a pool house, which is going to be two stories. That's, well, I say it's up on a pedestal, but it's not really up on.
They're building a platform in the backyard, stone wall with a pool and a spa, a little rain garden next to the pool.
Right.
A terrace, and then the story and a half, if you will, pool house, which was about 1,000 square feet in size in the backyard. There were wetlands in the back, a little drainage ditch. EPC wrote a positive report that they're likely to approve it at their next meeting or act favorably upon it.
That was the one where I had the architect go back to the plans when they resubmit and make sure they have the heights of the building to make sure the height's okay, because it's one and a half stories on top of a six-foot platform. The other item that I had in my head, and I don't remember seeing it on the plans, was lot coverage. I gotta believe they're okay with lot coverage because it's an over-oversized lot. I don't remember ever seeing that on the plans.
Yeah, I think that's something that we'll have to check the plans. It could be a condition of approval is when you get the permit for the pool house or the pool is put included on the plans.
Okay. We do that. Yeah, make sure that that's in the text box. That would be good.
Yep.
Okay. The upstairs right now in their plans is supposed to be storage on either side of the game room in the middle, the playroom in the middle. Like we said at that meeting, we do not have an accessory dwelling unit statute at this point in time in life.
Yeah.
Someday we may. And if that does happen, make sure those windows are fire-coated windows. If they ever do, can get converted to bedrooms.
Don't have to be a condition, but it cannot be a kitchen in the pool house.
Right, there's no kitchen in there today. There was something in there, okay? Fred, when Fred went over the plans, he picked up a bunch of different items that were clarified. And we got to answer, yeah. Good, Cara, what's up?
Wasn't the kitchen? And it wasn't in the plans for the pool house, and there was a large outdoor kitchen?
That's not close. It's on the other side. It's not close to.
Okay, okay.
Excuse me. But again, you know, I mean, the applicants are getting smarter. They're building kitchens that are outside versus of the house. But it's all compliant. Anybody else have questions on this one? Give me a couple of thumbs up, and we'll instruct staff to write up a positive approval for this one. I got Jeff Ball, I got George Riley, I got Cara, ask your questions, okay? You got that, Jeremy?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. The next one on here is coastal site plan review number 253A is an apple. Landfilling regaining application number 367A is an apple. James and Elizabeth Dagnan?
Dagnan.
Dagnan at 19 Brush Island Road. These guys are going to build a, I want to call it a small pool on a nice-sized lot that's at the end of a cul-de-sac shared driveway. It was just like cul-de-sac, it's like four houses down there. It's a real small pool in the back on a big piece of land. It backs up to Hally Pond. It's a really nice house. I know a bunch of the neighbors, a bunch of neighbors built houses there. We had no questions or comments from any neighbors, any issues?
Nope.
This one's pretty straightforward, too.
Any comments from the commission? If not, we can have something ready for next week.
Everyone's saying, yeah.
No, okay, great.
Fantastic. Next one.
That's it.
That's it, okay? We're going to punt Near Water Lane, and we're going to punt ABELIS. Okay? Next approval minutes. Want to forget that?
Yes.
We'll forget approval minutes next time, okay? Any other business? It's a special meeting. We're not going to talk about any of the business because we can anything. Our next upcoming meeting is going to be October 26, my mother's birthday. And then after that, we have November 9th. For October 26, is that when Palmer's is coming in?
We believe that's next week, yes.
Okay, so everyone in the general public and in life from the TV 79, the Palmer's Shopping Center application amendment is going to be here October 26. If anyone's interested, come back and watch this on TV. November 9th is nothing. That's after election day.
November 9th, public hearing night. We've got a variety of items. Not sure exactly what will be on the agenda at this point, but.
Probably do officers to that night, maybe?
Yes, election of officers, November 9th.
And then we did have a meeting, just for the record, on November 2nd, which is election night of Tuesday. That's going to be canceled, okay? Now, that's the end of the general. We're going to go into a public hearing. Anybody want to say anything about the public hearing? Cara Gately?
I will be recusing myself for the public meeting due to the fact that I work in the, in the current office building that is proposed to be redeveloped, so I will take my, have a good evening.
Thank you, Cara. Appreciate that. No objection. You're allowed to do that, and have a nice evening.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I should report, apparently I just participated in a public chat, which I honestly didn't intend to, but someone asked me privately, I think, whether I thought there was any conflict for anybody who worked at Parklands or who was related to a former chairman of P&amp;Z participating in this. I happened to say no to both, and I think the record should simply reflect that.
That's fine. In my understanding of the law, you might have had a communication prior to the public hearing, but the public hearing hasn't been open yet.
Well, whatever. It was actually a few minutes ago during the general meeting.
Okay.
But apparently, apparently I mistakenly replied to everyone, and I didn't intend to do that. But for the, I mean, I'm not ashamed. I stick by my view, but there it is.
All right, great. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we're going to go into the public hearing. The first item on the public hearing is proposed amendment to Darian zoning map. It's COZM number 2-2021, 3 Parklands Drive, put forth by Parklands Darian LLC. They propose to apply the Darian Office Multifamily Residential Overlay, DOMR, to the subject property to permit, to permit multifamily residential dwellings as a principal use using the special, using a special permit. The 3.915 plus minus acre subject property is located on the southern end of Parklands Drive, approximately 1,100 feet south of its intersection with Old Kings Highway North, and is shown on Assessor's Map number 35 as Lot 34, Unit Number 2 in the designed office zone, DO zone. The proposed zoning map amendments are on file and available for review in the Town Clerk's Office, the Pending Zoning Office, and online at darianct viewpointcloud.com. Jeremy, what do we got? We could open up one at a time?
I think what we may do, I I don't have a strong preference. I'll leave it to the applicant, whether they want to do them together. They are interrelated. I will note for the record that the commission, a few months ago, I think it was back in the summer, created a new overlay zone, which is this DOMR zone, which allows multifamily residential dwellings as a principal use requiring a special permit. The proposal tonight is to take that zone and apply it to a specific property at 3 Parklands, which now contains an office building. And the applicant, as part of the pending site plan and special permit, it proposes to actually demolish the existing building, construct a new apartment building associated, parking, landscaping, lighting, et cetera. So.
You have to have the first one before you can get the second.
Correct. It's, it's two parts of it are application, which are interrelated. So we put them on the same agenda, and I'll leave it to the applicants and their team to take it from here. I will note for the record that the commission has brought in two outside peer reviewers at the applicant's expense. This is Michael Galante from Cartisie and Hanover to discuss parking and traffic, and Joe Canis from Ty &amp; Bond, who reviewed the storm water management. And so after the applicant makes their presentation, we'll hear from those outside consultants and their outside reviews relative to what was put forward.
It makes sense if we open up both then.
Yeah, let's open both together, and that way the applicant can proceed with their presentation.
I see Mr. Hennessy's here. Is he the representative?
I think Mr. Flaherty's going to kick us off.
Okay, but who represents the applicant?
Mr. Flaherty.
Okay. Craig Flaherty and Phil Hennessy, for that record. I think to me, it makes sense to open up both applications at one time because you might talk about one that's in the other part. You guys agree?
I completely agree with that. I think in the interest of time efficiency and frankly, the ability to best explain the proposal before you having both applications opened and discussed is preferable.
Okay. You give me a thumbs up, Craig.
Yes, I agree with Bill 100%. Please, please open the vote.
Okay, next item, I'm going to open up in the agenda, which interrelated, is the site plan application number 309. Special permit application number 42-I? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. Landfilling and regrading application number 516. Parklands Darian LLC, 1 Parklands Drive and 3 Parklands Drive. Proposal to raise the existing office building at 3 Parklands Drive, convert and redevelop the property as a multifamily residential consistent with the designed office multifamily residential overlay zone. DOMR regulation, regulations, and perform related site development activities including regrading of the property, installation of landscaping, lighting, and storm water management. The applicant proposed to construct a three-story multifamily apartment building with a total of 60 apartments, studio, one bedroom and two bedroom apartments, including seven deed-restricted affordable units. A total of 139 parking spaces will be created, 86 of which are proposed for exclusive use by the residents of 3 Parklands Drive, and 53 of which are proposed to be shared with the applicant with the adjacent existing living facility at 1 Parklands Drive. Assessor's map number 35, Lot Number 4, 34, Unit Number 1. The improvements to 1 Parklands Drive are limited to the sidewalk, sidewalk extensions, underground utilities, and parking-related improvements. 3 Parklands Drive is a 3.915 plus minus acres and is located on the southern end of Parklands Drive, approximately 1,100 feet south of its intersection with Old Kings Highway North, and is shown on Assessor's Map number 35 as Lot 34, Unit 2, currently in the designed office zone, DO. Companion zoning map change proposed to rezone 3 Parklands Drive to design multifamily residential overlay, DOMR. The application materials are on file and available for review in the Planning and Zoning Office and online at darianct viewpointcloud.com. That was a mouthful. Sorry about that. Okay, so as Jeremy alluded to, the first item for commissioners, we have to talk about the zoning change to land the overlay zone on this property. And then after we talk about that, then we're going to go into the application for the site plan and what's going to happen there. So they are interrelated. In terms of the application and the process and the presentation, I have a stink and suspicion the applicant is going to bounce back and forth between both of them, both applications, so we can sit back, listen, and watch. Tonight, I think we're just going to do, the applicants can make their presentation?
Yeah, I think the applicant's going to present. We'll hear from the peer reviewers. The commissioner will ask questions. We will have some time for the public, for their input. I did speak with Mr. Flaherty, and he said that we will have some time for the public to ask any questions they may have, so we'll get to some of that.
Okay. I'd like to turn it over to the applicant. We have Craig Flaherty here and Mr. Hennessy. Take it away, Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I'll begin here, and I want to thank you all for having us tonight and being accommodating by combining these applications. For the record, my name is William Hennessy. I'm an attorney with the firm Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy. I practice out of our Stanford office at 707 Summer Street. And I'm on behalf, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Parklands Dairy and LLC. Parklands, as you know, owns the office building located at 3 Parklands Drive, which is located between Selick Woods to the south and the recently approved senior living facility at the north end of Parklands Drive. As a housekeeping matter, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note that both we and your staff have copiously complied with both local regulations and state statute in terms of notice. Notices were appropriately published and papers on our responsibility list is mailing notice to neighbors. We have taken the most conservative approach imaginable and measurements and have gone. and have gone even beyond that in terms of providing that notice. We have also, Mr. Gillen, the owner of Parklands, has also taken it upon himself to send individual notices to neighbors in addition to the required statutory notice and has held meetings which the neighbors in the residential Fairmead area were invited to. And notice, I mean, the appropriate confirmation of all that notice is in your staff's files, and I'm sure that they will confirm that that it's there. Are a number of folks, and in the interest of time, I think I will introduce them to you at this point. I'll begin with Bob Gillen, who is principal of Parkland Dairy and LLC, and as such is the applicant owner here in person. As you've noted, my friend, Mr. Flaherty, a professional engineer and principal at Redness and Mead is here. Craig's firm has done the surveying, the engineering, and Craig has acted as a zoning analyst as we've gone forward in this planning process. Matt Pop from Environmental Land Solutions has prepared the landscape, the landscaping plan, and he is our landscape architect. David Ball from Monroe Partners is the building architect, and he is here to explain the building. Kermit Wa for our traffic expert is here. Submitted a report which has been reviewed by your parent consultant, Mr. Galante. And my colleague Jason Klein is also here. We do not anticipate that all the gentlemen I just listed for you will make formal presentations to you tonight, but please understand that all of them are here and available to speak and answer any questions that you may have. And as you have noted, Mr. Chairman, we're here on the following requests. It's a collection of applications, including request to land the recently approved D O M R zone on this site. And as required by that recently adopted regulation, we're also here with an application for approval of site plan and special permit. And because of certain site activities on site, we have also filed the so-called earthworks application. And they are all aimed at redeveloping the the site known as three Parklands, which is about three point nine acres, and will include the removal of the existing thirty four thousand eight hundred square foot office building, which was constructed in the mid nineteen eighties and replacement of that facility with a new facility with a completely different use, a multifamily facility with sixty residential units. I think as we progress tonight, we're going to try to be very efficient. So your peer review folks can opine and as many neighbors as would like to speak. Our goal will be to have this be a very efficient and open night. I'd like to begin with Mr. Flaherty, who will, you know, walk through an orientation of the property and help you understand how it's in context, it exists in context with its neighbors and surrounding uses. And then Craig, of course, can walk us through the site plan and the site engineering details. He will be followed by Mr. Ball, who can walk us through the building itself and the architecture. Mr. Pop can then follow with the landscaping and to the extent that you want amplification on the traffic and parking aspects, Mr. Wa is here. However, I think before we proceed with Craig, I'd like to take just a moment of time. I'm aware of the fact that there's a new commission member who doesn't have the benefit of the time we spent last spring. And by the time this gets decided, there will likely be another new commissioner involved. So I'd like to just take a second to just do a little walk down the recent memory lane so we can put this into better context holistically. Craig, this might be a good time. If you could put up on the screen for us the, you know, an existing conditions photograph so we can look at what's here and understand what's what's around us. The, you all recall that we're here. This past summer, you approved an amendment to the regulations that created the design office multifamily residential zone. And this tool allows us to build on the town's demonstrated success over developing multifamily housing over the last ten, twenty years. The site we see now is, we think, for a variety of reasons that we explained to you in the fall, ideal for the redevelopment. The site, as we reminded you, which is outlined here in blue, is really the creation or the was birthed by the construction of I ninety five back in the nineteen fifties. And the resultant seven point nine acre site was gradually and incrementally developed over the next thirty years. First thing that happened was an office building toward the north end of the site where Craig's got the cursor now was constructed, and that happened in the nineteen sixties, nineteen sixty four, actually. That was a twenty four thousand square foot, single tenant office. Later, about twenty years later, the current office building, which Craig now has the cursor on, the the building that's just under thirty five thousand square feet was constructed, and it performed well for many years, but like many of these suburban office parks, it is suffering. Prior to our coming in with these applications and just a few years ago, two thousand eighteen, application was made to amend text of the D O R zone to allow for a senior facility to go in. And the smaller office building was removed, and the senior facility is in, is constructed and is operational now. Talked about, back in the spring, we talked a lot about how to effectuate a redevelopment here and why it was wise. We looked deeply at the town plan of conservation and development, and we discovered that there was a lot of language, and we took it to mean, and you proved it to mean that it wasn't just empty words about diversifying housing and creating different typologies of housing and creating housing that could serve different income levels of residents. And there was a lot of talk about the need for that, not only the desire for it. There was studies commissioned that were published by you folks that showed that since, I think it was nineteen, excuse me, year two thousand, you and your predecessors on this commission have approved something in the neighborhood of eight hundred housing units within the town of Darien, and over thirty percent of those were so-called off market, meaning below market rate. And they took that to be evidence of the town's serious commitment toward developing not only different typologies of housing, but also addressing the need for understanding that there needs to be a diversification of income brackets that can afford it as well. We didn't really have a difficult time with you because we think you recognized all that, and you recognized that the town plan of conservation and development really meant something here tonight. We told you that if you approve that, we would work hard and come back to you at a very early date with a project that would advance what was in your town plan of conservation and development and would contain something in the neighborhood of, you know, sixty housing units. We told you that there would be a balance of, you know, studios, ones and two bedrooms. We promised that it would be attractive and something we could all be proud of. We told you that we would work hard, working with our neighbors, both our existing residential neighbors and our nonprofit neighbors who run the Selick Woods and Dunlap. And we told you that there would be component of this application, which must be under your adopted regulation with below market rate units, off market rate units. And we told you we would bring you something back that we thought we could all be proud of. We've done our studies. We've not only done the typical required studies and engineering details and provided all that along with the architecture and landscaping and the photo metrics. We've also gone, we think, in a sense above and beyond, and studied the acoustical impacts and noise impacts that this could possibly produce, that this development could possibly produce, as well as any possible adverse impact on property values surrounding. All of that information is in your file. We think we have checked every box when it comes to complying with your site plan and special permit standards. We've given you a detailed, I think, report of why we think we comply. We're happy to answer any questions you may have of that at any time. But I think in the interest of time tonight, the smart thing to do would be for me to stop reciting history and turn the screen over to Mr. Flaherty for him to describe the actual proposal that we have in front of you. So with that, Craig, are you comfortable at this time to take the screen and sort of walk us through?
Ready to go, Bill. Thank you for the intro. For the record, my name is Craig Flaherty. I'm a principal and senior engineer with Redness and Mead, a land use consulting company with offices in Stanford and Wilton. On this project, we are the site civil engineers and the planning and zoning consultants for the applicant. We actually are not the surveyors. That's Seymour, just to correct, correct the record on that. We, depending on timing, we had two of our team members at the ARB meeting tonight, Matt Pop of Environmental Land Solutions and David Ball of the Monroe Partnership. So we may go to traffic first, and we may go to your peer reviews first before we get to those two items, depending on when they when they show up on the on camera. So sharing my screen, we provided the orientation. This, of course, and most of the maps you see tonight, save for the next one, I'm going to show you. North is oriented to the right. Just site fits better on the paper, rotated ninety degrees so that north is pointing to the right. But this is north, that is south. The site is accessed by Parklands Drive, which is, comes in off of Old Kings Highway North and comes into the site at its north end. And the first application before you to consider is the application of the overlay to three Parklands Drive specifically. So Parkland Drive, the full lot of seven point nine acres actually has two condominium units, one at the front, which is one Parklands Drive, lot thirty four dash one, and that is the residents at Selix Woods, LCB Senior Living. The second condominium unit is three Parklands Drive, and that's at the back. That's the three point nine acres that is subject to the overlay request. So we are only changing, I'll show you that now. This is the one map I was referring to that is oriented north up. It is oriented north up because it's matching your zoning map. And so we wanted to orient it in the same way as you were zoning that. But you see highlighted here that area that we are looking to apply the designed office multifamily residential overlay to the designed office zone as a part of the site. That was done intentionally. We did not want to apply the D O M R to the assisted living facility. So this is the area of map change. It was provided graphically, and it was provided in descriptive narrative form, as is the five hundred foot setback from the area of the proposed zone change. You know, what you can see clearly on the aerial is how three Parklands is really set very much to the rear. You've got the ninety five rest stop on its west. It is bordered on the south by Dunlap Woods, which is owned by the Darian Land Trust. It is bordered on the east by Selix Wood, which is owned by the town of Darien. And then these are the adjacent residential lots along Fairmead Road. And so the area of focus for most of the improvements on this application is at this back property. The one item you have to consider when considering the the overlay application is that it is in conformance with your town plan of conservation development. Consider the town plan of conservation and development when making a decision on the overlay. And we included in our cover letter for the application, a narrative that talked about town plan of conservation, page four, which is highlights very global development strategies. And the main, one of the main development strategies is continue to diversify Darien's housing portfolio, right? We know that over ninety percent of Darien is made of family residences. And therefore, housing in Darien is attractive to folks that, one, can afford a single family residence, and two, are at a life stage where a single family residence makes sense to them, and it's something they want. There's not a lot of housing diversity when it comes for folks that might want a different product. And that is spoken about in terms of Darien maybe not gaining or maybe losing younger adult populations. And they are losing older adult populations that are now empty nesters and looking to scale down. And that's the need for diversification of housing. You also say on page one oh four, that's addressed the housing needs of an aging population. We talked about that move down. You say on page one oh five of the P O C D that Darien will seek to encourage both affordable rental units and affordable ownership units in appropriate locations, at appropriate densities. We're complying when your inclusionary zoning regulations will see seven units of inclusionary housing on site, affordable to those making up to eighty percent of the state median income. But specific to this location and not just general throughout the site is the future land use plan, which is presented in chapter sixteen of your plan of conservation and development. There are two maps in this plan. The first map is the policy area map, which notes that our site, here with the big red arrow pointed to it, is orange. And legend, orange is considered a possible development opportunity area. And a possible development opportunity area is defined in your regulations. There we go. As areas currently zoned for business, which should be retained for economic development and or used to help meet the housing needs of the community, the regulations for these areas and number and location of zoning districts should be reviewed and refined to ensure they will encourage the most appropriate development. Well, this is exactly the decision that this commission made on the text amendment application, which was approved during the summer. You review the regulations, and you've updated your regulations to allow for the application of the designed office multifamily residential zone to designed office zones throughout town when such a request is made to land the zone along with a special permit application. The second map that is provided in your plan of conservation and development in the future land use plan is the future land use plan map. And on this plan, our site, three Parklands Drive is highlighted in red. And this is what a plan of conservation and development does. It says, what are the things we want to conserve? And where are the areas that we would consider development? And it is also called out as a possible development opportunity area on that map. That definition being areas that have been and are intended to be developed with retail, personal service, office and similar business uses as appropriate to each location, and that may be used to help meet the housing needs of the community. So suffice it to say, we believe there is a significant, significant and consistent language and recommendations in your plan of conservation and development to allow you to approve the overlay zone at this location. We then get into the next portion of the applications. And the next portion of the applications have to do with the specifics of the site plan. So we have the special permit application. We have the site plan application, and we have the earth filling and regating application. And in your regs, you have sections that you are required to consider when considering applications such as these. So for the special permit application, you look at section one thousand five A through I as your standards for consideration and approval. For the site plan application, you look at section one oh two five, one through nine for your standards and considerations of approval. And for the grading and filling application, you look at section eight fifty three, items A through G. We provided a complete point by point explanation of how our application meets each of these standards. And that was included in the main application narrative provided in all your packets available online for inspection, available in planning and zoning office for inspection. But so what are we going to do once we apply the overlay overlay zone to the site? But uh, so what are we going to do once we apply the overlay overlay zone to the site? Uh, this is, we're back now north oriented to the right, which the rest of the exhibits, I believe, will be the same way. Uh, and you can see now replaced in the position of the office building is uh the new three-story apartment building with uh sixty apartments proposed, and that will be six studios, twenty-nine one-bedroom units and twenty-five two-bedroom units. Um, again, seven of those units will be uh slated as below market rate.
Craig, I think you want to get your uh your uh
Oh, I shared back on. Now, that's a great idea. I'm I'm giving a great presentation to myself. Uh, so here's the, here's the illustrative site plan that was a part of your uh application materials. Uh, and we finally see uh again, the new apartment building in place of the office building in the back of the site. Proposed landscaping is shown, proposed parking and drives are shown. You may recall that the last version we showed had fifty-nine apartments. Basically, we swapped one of the two bedrooms we had in our schematic design for two one-bedrooms now in this more detailed design. Um, we actually laid out all the units on all the floor plans. David will get into that when he does his presentation. So with a more accurate layout, we were actually able to expand uh a lot of the lobby and amenity areas and tighten up uh the apartment layouts as well. So uh, basically, you also recall from the past, we are not asking to change any of the underlying uh mass bulk setback, coverage, height, stories, regulations. All of those regulations are as is in the designed office zone. You could build exactly this building as an office building in this zone today using those regulations. At three stories at thirty-five feet, that a total of twenty-five percent coverage for the site. So we're not changing any of those standards. The only thing uh we're asking for is the idea that we want to have a multifamily residential use here instead of an office use. To be specific about some of the uh uh detail of that, uh, we do have, I'm not going to dwell on this, but there is a zoning site plan in our application package, which gives you very specific detail on exactly how we're complying with each of these objective metrics of the zoning uh regulations. Um, all that is in the charts down here at the bottom of the page on uh zoning data, the parking, the inclusionary, uh, and shown in the plan view. But for the purpose of the go-to meeting and virtual condition, I'm going to dwell on uh uh the color site plan, uh, which is a little easier to consume. So coverage, building coverage. Uh, right now, the existing building covers five point four percent of the site. The proposed building is going to cover six point six percent of the site. So our building coverage is going up by one point two percent uh from twenty-three point eight for the total site when considering LCB as well to twenty-five for the total site. Uh, even though these are separate condominium units, when you apply the zoning regs, you've got to calculate them for the entire site. It's just the way it works. So it's a one point two percent increase in building coverage from what it is today at twenty-three point eight to what it's going to be tomorrow at twenty-five. Um, as you see, we have two dimensions. Here, uh, the closest neighbor here at twenty-three Fairmead is about two hundred and ten feet from the building. Uh, the next closest neighbor at thirty-four Fairmead is about three hundred and thirty feet from the building. Uh, this gets to the fact that we have a lot of uh buffer area around the site. Um, not only the land trust and town properties, but um as this site has been developed over the years, chunks of it have put been put into conservation easement. So on the east side of the site, uh, there is a conservation easement that's about sixty-nine thousand square feet. That's unchanged from when it is created and we're proposing no changes to it. Uh, and we're staying outside of that conservation easement with all of our proposed development. Then there's the conservation easement, which was created uh when LCB was approved. Um, that's going to be expanded slightly to be a total of forty-three thousand square feet. Uh, the net result ultimately is that a significant portion of this site is permanently protected through these conservation easements. The, you also have a standard for maximum developed site area, which is effectively an impervious coverage standard or a hardscape standard. In the DO zone, you're allowed to have eighty percent of your site covered with impervious surfaces and hardscape. This application has a total of forty-five point nine percent impervious coverage. That is an increase of one point eight percent from the existing condition. So existing condition is forty-four point one, proposed condition is forty-five point nine, when eighty percent is allowed. Uh, that means fifty-four percent is in green space instead of the minimum twenty percent in green space. So it's almost a two hundred and fifty percent um exceedance of the requirements of your uh regulations for green space. The height of the building today is twenty-eight point two feet, the zoning height of the building, uh, average grade to flat roof. Uh, the zoning height of the building tomorrow will be thirty-five feet. So we go from twenty-eight point two feet on zoning height to thirty-five feet on zoning height. You will see on this plan uh, the new drive uh that goes around the back of the building. Uh, this drive on the east side of the building is for emergency access only. So the fire truck can come down and have three hundred and sixty-degree access around the building and get back out the site without having to back out uh in an awkward manner. We are proposing both parking below the building and uh an exclusive use parking field here, as well as the shared parking that exists largely in the this first section of garage and LCB. Throughout the process, uh, the applicant has been in conversation uh with both the land trust and Park and Rec, informing them of what we were proposing. Uh, and uh, part of the application sees certain improvements uh that would benefit the park. Currently, uh, the uh open space parcel only has two dedicated parking spaces, although a lot of the office spaces are used. There's really only two that are legally dedicated. Uh, we're going to increase that number to a total of eleven. Those are these parking spaces here. Uh, we're proposing a new pergola at the entrance to the park in this location by the number two. Um, and we believe that's a safer location than its current location here by this curve. And uh, we picked the new location to be away from that curve and also away from any traffic that was going in and out of the forty-some-odd places in the garage below the residential facility. So we believe this is a safer location to enter the park. Uh, and we're intending to work with the land trust to reconnect the trails from the new entrance to the trail network. There'll be a sign there, there'll be a trash can there, uh, maybe it'd be a water spigot there. Um, uh, and we've been working with them every step of the way to make sure they were informed and understood uh what we're doing. And the applicant is excited to continue that um cooperation. The other important component of the plan is extending the sidewalk. Um, I'm going to go to a better aerial here, I think. This is just the Google aerial, so I can show you the sidewalk that comes down Old Kings Highway North in Parkland's Drive. And when LCB was built, they built a lot of that sidewalk, brought it into site. It borders uh the assisted living facility, um, but stops right about here uh before the end of the assisted living facility. We are proposing to pick the sidewalk up at that point and continue it down south to the new entrance of the apartment building. So here we're picking up that sidewalk, bringing it down to the entrance of the apartment building and also extending it through the exterior courtyard planted with trees and shrubs um, all the way down to uh that new entrance to the open space. So uh, whether you're a resident of our building or you're a resident of LCB's building or a member of the public, you'll now be able to be on a sidewalk all the way from Old Kings Highway North uh to the open space. So trying to improve public access to the park. Um, and in the front, of course, you've got uh a generous drop-off pickup area. Um, these days, there's a lot of different ways to drop off pickup uh with Uber and Lyft and food and packages. And so we, uh, any new apartment building has to have a generous drop-off pickup area, which we have, which is immediately adjacent uh, to available amenity and storage space inside the building. As far as uh parking, uh, we are complying with uh your regulation, the zoning regulation. It's within the text of uh your zoning regulations at this point, which is uh one parking space for each studio, one and a half parking spaces for each one-bedroom and two parking spaces for each two-bedroom, which means that a hundred parking spaces are required for our needs. Um, we actually have access to a hundred and thirty-nine with this proposed plan. Eighty-six of those spaces will be exclusive use for the apartment building. Fifty-three are a part of the shared use with the assisted living facility. On the assisted living side, because we have to make sure the whole site works, um, they are required to have seventy-three per year zoning regulations. Uh, they will have sixty-four exclusive spaces at the end of the day that have them right now. They don't are changing anything and they'll still have access to the fifty-three uh parking spaces that um uh, they have access to today largely in this section of the garage. So they are required to have seventy-three and they have access to a hundred and seventeen, so total big picture. Even if we weren't sharing any parking spaces, your zoning regulations require a hundred and seventy-three and there are two hundred and three spaces available on site, not including the eleven spaces set aside for the land trust. So we think there's uh plenty of parking for the proposed use, that its layout is consistent with your regulations uh uh and consistent with the way that uh all other sites have been developed in town with parking um and will operate safely and efficiently. So this gets to the next component of consideration of site plan. Is there adequate infrastructure on site to accommodate the proposed development? So the first thing we looked at is stormwater runoff, the stormwater collection, conveyance, mitigation, and discharge systems. Uh, Redness and Mead prepared the drainage report, which was issued with the application on September seventh. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission uh hired a independent engineering consultant, Joe Canis of Tyon Bond, to review our work uh on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, on behalf of the town. We received those review comments on October fourth and then responded to those review comments on October twelfth. And uh, by uh yesterday, uh, Tyon Bond issued a response, which I'm sure you'll hear about, basically saying that we had addressed all the comments or the remaining comments were minor and could be handled as conditions of approval, uh, should you get that for. Um, so again, I'll just give you, give you a walkthrough on what we're proposing. Um, under existing conditions, let's go to that because it's relevant. Uh, I guess I'll go to maybe the public access town uh GIS system. Uh, under existing con uh uh conditions, water is collected from the roofs and the parking and drives. And there's two infiltration systems, one off the front of the building under the parking lot here and one uh under the back of the, uh, off the back of the building under the parking and drives over here. That does a pretty good job of collecting most of the water.
Hey, Craig, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yes, sir.
If you, if you look at the, the way you're um presenting, now you're switching from the zoning change basically to the site plan. Would you agree?
Uh, oh, yeah, no, I had done that a while ago. Yeah.
Right, understood. Um, so what I want to do is just take a couple of seconds to poll the commissioners to see if they have any questions relative to the, your, your first um application, which is the, the site plan change.
Like the zoning change.
The zoning change. Okay? Because I, I think you eloquently, you know, described everything in our P O C D. I don't think you missed anything because you took the words right out of our document. Um, so if you just afford me a minute just to ask any commissioners any questions that we can, you can keep going to the way you were. Is that okay? Um, commissioners, Mr. Riley, Mr. Rand. Jim, what I, what I want to do is, is if you look at our agenda, the first item is, is the zone change. So if we could start to ask a couple of questions, if you have anything relative to the zone change before we get deep into the special permit application, that would be great. Go ahead, Jim.
Uh, I, my, I'm thinking back to when we created or authorized this uh this overlay zone that we're now talking, now discussing. Uh, and the discussion about the creation of that overlay zone was in anticipation of this application.
Agreed.
As a practical matter. Um, and I guess my question of Craig or, or maybe Jeremy is is there anything in the today's application that differs or changes in any material way? The assumptions that the commission made in creating the overlay zone to begin with? Or we pretty much, because this is just a consist or a a carry-on of the discussion that we had uh three, four months ago?
We, we wanted to be uh very forthright with our plans when we brought the text amendment to you, and which is why we went so far along with the architecturals at that time uh to show you what we were proposing and thinking. I, I really can't think of, I mean, there's a, an exceptional amount of engineering and architecture and landscape architecture that has gone into the site plan and special permit applications. But, you know, I think the only noticeable change that uh we made was the one that I mentioned. Uh, we previously said it was fifty-nine units and now it's sixty because we switched one of the two bedroom units to make two one-bedroom units. You know, I don't think that changes your assumptions or considerations at all, but uh that's for you guys to decide.
Okay, I, I mean, it, my, my impression was that there, that we, we are not tonight presented with any material changes.
Yeah, we, we just have to build this record in and of itself because this is a new application process, a new public hearing, so you might hear us repeating some things. Um, because this has to stand on its low, uh, on its own as a record that you've considered.
Fair enough. On that, on that assumption, if my assumption is correct, and I, I gather it is, I have no questions.
Thanks, sir.
Um, next, I'm going to go to Jeff Ball real quick. Jeff, you're, you're the, the cut, cut newbie on this one. You may have never seen this before. You got this packet dropped on your front yard on Friday uh or Thursday. Any questions at this point? You, you up to speed?
I'm still trying to go through it because there's a lot here. Um, but I don't have any questions yet, but there's, for me, there's still a lot to go through, so.
Great. Because what, what, the reason why I took the quick break is, is we created the overlay zone, right? So now we can, oh, we can land this anyplace we want to in the town of Darien.
In the DO zone.
In the DO zone. Not anywhere. You can't land it on my house. But um, the first application is the argument or the reasonings and the application that proves that they're allowed to put, or they should, we, they should be able to put this overlay zone on this existing text law. Okay. Um, George Riley, you good for now? You're good. He's saying yes. Okay.
Yeah, also important to note what you're not doing, which is, or what you are doing, which is the, the only thing that would change uh with your approval of the overlay zone with the application that's filed is the application of that zone on this three point nine acres period. Uh, anybody that wanted to pursue uh this concept for another designed office zone in site would have to be here with the same suite of applications uh to prove the merit of that uh of those changes.
Agreed. Okay, so, so with that said, those are all of our questions with regards to the amendment landing here or the, the zoning text landing here. So now, please, you know, keep going.
Back to drainage.
Yeah, go back to it.
Uh, so I was saying there's an existing infiltration system uh north of the building and an existing infiltration system south of the building. They collect most of the water from the site and discharge it through an existing pipe uh that heads through our property, three Parkland's Drive uh towards Dunlap Lake to the west. Uh, and there is an area of the back parking lot that actually bypasses uh the collection systems. And there's a, there's a leak-off uh right here at the edge of the parking lot that uh this whole surface area actually discharges directly overland to the south uh towards uh Selix Woods, Dunlap Woods. Um, we're eliminating uh that leak-off, uh, as you will see in the proposed um, in the proposed uh documents. So as I men- So as I mentioned, the uh hardscape area is only going up by about one-point-eight percent. That's about sixty-five-hundred square feet on a site basis. And we're effectively redeveloping an already developed footprint. Uh, sixty-five-hundred square feet, just to give you kind of an idea to think about it. That might be what you see with a typical single-family house and drive. So the increase in hardscape out here is about what you'd see with one single-family. House and the drives and attendant pervious coverage that comes with a single-family house. Um, how are we offsetting uh that increase? And how are we managing stormwater moving forward? Uh, first, we're proposing three different areas of permeable or porous surfaces. So the whole drop-off area shown here in Tan is gonna be permeable pavers. Permeable pavers have wide gap joints with stone chips in between them. Rain hits the surface and actually soaks down through those cracks between the pavers. Into a reservoir of crushed stone below to collect uh the stormwater. It's a one mitigation tool that we have in our toolbox of stormwater mitigation. The second is uh the porous asphalt, the uh emergency drive will be made of porous asphalt. Uh, this is similar to the surface that just went in at Highland Farm. Uh, it's asphalt without any fines, so it's actually like a hard sponge. Uh, in that uh, it's got um pores uh that allow rainwater to soak directly through it. Again, to a crushed stone reservoir that is below the surface. And the third area is a permeable surface area here at the back. Um, all told, uh, we have about ten thousand five hundred square feet of these porous surfaces, which far exceeds the sixty-five-hundred square feet of. Uh, of, of new hardscape, but that really wasn't enough. We've got to comply with some pretty stringent regulations in town. Um, we have a replacement slash new infiltration system going under the uh. Outdoor courtyard to the east of the building. And uh, we are taking, this is the detailed plan, so. Here's that new infiltration system indicated to the east of the building. Uh, and we are also. Uh, increasing the size of the infiltration system in the back building. Right now it's uh three rows in size, it's being retained and three rows are being added to it. Um, so uh, you'll see here a catch basin which does not exist today. There'll be a full curb on the south side of the site and all the water in this parking lot will get to that catch basin. That catch basin has a deep sump, as do all the catch basins do, uh, and a hood. So that settles out uh heavy debris and particles and sediment that might be in the water. The hood prevents float, floatables from going down the pipe. The second circle you see is a uh, get back on this one. The second circle you see is a, a oil grit separator. Uh, so that does what that deep sump catch basin does, but it does it better in terms of settling out sediment loading that it picked up from the parking lot. And trying to prevent uh any oil drips or gas drips from moving downstream uh by uh separating the floatables out. Um, and then here is that infiltration system. When the infiltration system overflows, it overflows through these pipes here to the west and then hooks into. Uh, the existing pipe that runs uh through our property down to Dunlap Lake. Um, uh, no water from the developed section of Three Parklands Drive. Flows in the direction of Fairmead Road. No water from the development of Three Parklands Drive will end up in Fairmead Road or the properties adjacent to Fairmead Road. All of this water from our site goes to the west, goes to Dunlap Lake. You don't have to trust me, you have your own peer reviewer that checks my work. Um, who I, uh, as I suggested, has um. Said that all of his comments were addressed or were otherwise minor in nature and could be handled as conditions of approval, should you get that for it? So that's uh stormwater. Um, going back to some of the other utilities supporting the building. Um, sanitary sewers, uh, I should, I should state that I am not here in any official capacity. On my appointed position to the sewer commission, I am here solely as a consultant working for the applicant. Uh, but just to report some facts. Uh, my colleague Patrick Scher, who's a professional engineer, prepared a sanitary sewer report, which was submitted with the application in September seventh. Uh, that app, that report was uh reviewed by the Department of Public Works and they sent an email to. Uh, Jeremy, Darren Ostifying sent an email to Jeremy on October fifteenth, saying that the report has been uh accepted. Um, and uh, let's see. So that's sewers, we do have to increase the size of these. So right now, all the sewage from this building is actually pumped up to the front of the site. Uh, and we have to increase the size of that forest main from a two-inch uh to a three-inch to accommodate the effluent from the. Apartment building and the, the uh forest main will come up Parkland's Drive. And the endpoint of that forest main is located uh right about here, there's a manhole that we're tying into. Um, so that is sanitary sewers. Water, we've been in discussions with Aquarian Water Company alre- already. Uh, we need to replace the two-inch domestic service with a four-inch domestic service. Similarly, that'll come up Parkland's Drive. The tie-in point is off the shoulder um in the vicinity of the driveway into the site. So that new service will come up to that location, come down the shoulder, down this section of Parkland's Drive. To the back, there's a separate uh six-inch service jest for the fire service, for the sprinklers and. The uh, the fire hydrants. Um, and that hopefully will remain as is, uh, we still have to prove to the fire marshal that it has adequate capacity, uh, which we're working on. Um, in terms of electricity, uh, heat, hot water, cooking will all be electric. Uh, and so uh, there's add overhead uh electric that comes to the site, we're proposing a transformer. Uh, right about here off the parking lot, so it's not in the front door of the building. Uh, there will also be a generator in the basement to run life safety systems and the sewer ejector pump and, and uh. Uh, make sure the sprinkler systems run uh and the, the alarm systems run. So that's gonna be in the basement, uh, generally over here, you may see those on the floor plans when David Ball gets to them. Uh, and uh, that'll be, there'll be a diesel tank in the basement as well, but no onsite. Uh, gas tanks or propping tanks, other than that diesel tanks supporting uh the life safety systems. Um, we've received comments from Bob Bush, the fire marshal. Uh, and um, we have, are seeking clarification on a couple of them, but in general, we don't have any problems with his comments being incorporated. Uh, as a condition of approval. Uh, certainly want to make the fire marshal happy, the whole building will be sprinkled. We are proposing um, a new hydrant here at the front of the building within fifty feet of the building disconnect. Um, uh, there's a segregated six-inch main solely for the fire service, there'll be stand pipes in the, in the stair towers. Uh, and there'll be uh, uh, a ventilation system in the garage as required. Um, and we've incorporated uh turning movements in our drawings, actually. We always make sure the ladder truck can turn around the site. This is uh sheet S E eight of our set that was submitted with the application, showing that Darien Ladder Truck can uh. Uh, make the turns uh throughout the site as necessary to be able to turn around. Um, this was the spot in my presentation that I was. Considering kicking to David.
He's there, he's there.
Oh, David is there, um, I don't know if Matt's there yet.
Yes, he is.
Okay, good, so um, I think I would at this point have uh David Ball. Uh, walk through the architecture of the building for you. David, you need me to call it up or can you do it?
I can't call it up, so if you don't mind putting it up.
Yeah, give me a second, it'll be up in a moment.
So as you're doing that, Craig, um, we originally uh presented to the Architecture Review Board on September twentieth. Um, in general, it was positive, but there was a series of comments, we adjusted the drawings. Brought it back to them and just met earlier this evening. And overall, it was, they were satisfied with what we've done. Uh, there is one minor comment about the rear facade adding some uh panels at the third floor. We were told we do not have to go back to A R B and that would be handled by us sending a PDF. Of those adjustments to the rear facade, which is the south facade of the building. And can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, you sound great.
Great, I, I saw a thumbs up, alright, so that's just the cover page, please, uh, next, next page. So this is the uh garage floor plan and south is to the left side of this drawing. Couple of features about this, at the bottom left or southeast of the building, we have a fitness center. Uh, where Craig's cursor is. And the idea was to create a, a very strong connection to Celix Woods. And so there, there's ample windows facing the, the woods and also there's a new entry gazebo at the woods itself. And a, a pergola just outside the building. And, and in order to make it convenient for the residents to get to the uh fitness center. We added an elevator at, at that end of the building as well as another elevator at the main entrance. Um, Craig mentioned the, actually, let me, uh, you know, as you can see, it's underground parking. I believe it's forty-five spaces, I can't see the number right at the moment, but it's that type of number. And we have included in that two handicap spaces. And, and that's very uh adjacent to the elevator going up to the main lobby and that continues up to the top of the building. At the northwest, which would be your top right of the building, is where the emergency generator would go, that's uh Craig mentioned that. And then um, aside from that, there's a couple of utility rooms, there's a trash room where he's showing it there. And so that's the basics, most of this floor is effectively underground. Next slide. The entrance, you can see the entry circle on the bottom right. And that would be the, effectively the north of the building. We've got a nice pergola outside the entrance and that as you enter and also, yeah, to the east, northeast of the building. Um, where his cursor is, that would be outdoor amenity space. And on the inside would be amenity space where you sort of see the, the blank rectangles. So that would be things like a community room, a media center, uh, library, that, that type of thing. You know, we have not fully developed those at that, at this point. And then beyond that, you know, it's, it's a mix of one and two-bedroom apartments. And we've done our best to break up the, the massing of the building. And that is by effectively creating three sections to the building so that it appears like in, in sorts, it's three buildings. And then built around the building is a series of gable elements and bay elements that break up the facade and break up the perceived. Size of the building. There is also on the first floor, in the um courtyard on the east side of the building. There's uh, a series of private patios coming up, some of the individual units at the grade. And there's a couple also at the uh west side of the building. Next slide, please. And this is a, uh, the second and third floor are effectively the same, you know, and it's a groupings of. Either one, two and uh studio apartments, one, one and two-bedroom and studio apartments. The uh, studio apartments are in the inside corner where you see that sort of canted wall right there. And next slide. So this, um, these are, actually, these are the before and after views of, of. On the right side is the before views and the left side is the after views as it relate to the comments from the Architecture Review Board. And, you know, in simple terms, we um. We change, we made the gables a little bit wider and simplified them a bit. So if you scroll down a little bit to the, no, the, go down.
Okay.
There you go, right there. So the gables on the right and the left of the front, this, you know, the north facade, which is the entry facade. We have these bay elements sticking out and we brought them in as just simple windows. And we also widened the proportions of many of the gables to improve the overall um. Basically, the proportions are much improved as a result. The roof at the, so what we did at the, at the north facade, which is the entry facade, is we curved part of the wall to reflect the curve. Of the entry circle and also the curved uh pergola at the entrance. And the, one of the Architecture Review Board's comments was to, uh, we had a, a straight across roof above the curved wall. We've since changed that to, the sloped roof is now a um curved with the curve of the building. Which really helps reinforce that basic idea. So that facade has sort of calmed down a bit and they were quite happy with what we had done related to that. We also at the entry uh pergola, the, the columns with the joists going across the top. We tilted that up, which made the entrance more welcoming. And to the left of that entry facade, you see there's another pergola, which would be part of the amenities, the outdoor amenity space. And there's also smaller pergolas at the private balconies um, along that facade as well. Um, you know, beyond that, the, the roofs, what, you know, we um have introduced. Mansard roofs and gable roofs around the perimeter, they act as screens for the mechanical units. There will be a series of relatively small condenser units, more or less the size you might have at your home. Um, and there will be one for each uh residential unit. So there will be a bunch of units up there, relatively small. And the idea of the, the gable and uh mansard roofs is to make sure they're screened, so you won't see them. It also um reduces the amount of sound coming off the building. And, you know, beyond that, we've got a mix of materials at the entrance and at some of the gable elements, we have. Stone at the first floor. And then as you go around the, the, and you don't have to move around, Craig, but at the rear of the building, we also have stone for the base of the building. And then at some of the um, the gable elements, we also have stone. And, and the general idea of the architecture was to break the building into sort of two-story elements. So it, as you look at the, the gable elements, you know, you've got a two, on the right side of, of that north side. You've got a two-story element with a grouping, a rectangular grouping of windows. And then above is a white, um, you know, white panels with the gable element itself. And then we repeated that, in some cases, there's two stories on the first, the first two floors. And in other cases, it's two stories on the upper two floors. The uh materials beyond the stone, most of the building is hardy plank, which is a cementitious siding material, fairly common. Uh, the windows would be, you know, fairly heavily trimmed with AZAC or, you know, it's a PVC. Uh, trim or panel system. And then around at the top, we've got a roughly a two-foot-wide cornice. And then the uh, the mansard and gable roofs would be a, a asphalt shingle. It's uh, it's called G A F slate line, it's a very nice shingle, very, you know, twenty-five, thirty-year shingle, very high quality. And uh, there's, you know, a, a mix of other, you know, we'd have uh galvanized gutters. And the um, the, the joists of the pergolas will be. Uh, western white cedar and over, and with a clear stain or a clear finish. And that effectively turns a grayish color, it doesn't turn black like red cedar does over time. Uh, you know, beyond that, I think. That sort of tells the story. Thanks.
Dave.
Craig, can I ask a couple of, can I ask a couple of snowball questions?
Softball or snowball, depends.
Snowball. The, the pergola, the, the um pergola that gets you into Selic Woods. It looks like it goes over the driveway. I gotta, I didn't see, I, I thought I saw it passing a um, a elevator to that. I gotta believe it's high enough that a fire ladder truck can fit underneath it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'll explain that, it doesn't actually go over the driveway. Uh, it's, it's separated, I'll give you back to the site plan here. So uh, there's a pergola right at the building face and it ends uh here. And then there's the separate uh element uh, uh, which will be the new uh element uh indicating the entrance to the park. There's no roof structure over here, that's just uh at-grade pavers.
Got it, okay, and, and for, for everyone's um edification, those at-grade pavers are similar to the ones. Got it. Okay. And, and for, for everyone's um edification, those at-grade pavers are similar to the ones that are over at like um Atria. Where um they have at-grade pavers that are pervious sets around Atria, if you ever driven through there.
It would use a number of locations around town successfully. Uh, it's a good product.
Okay. And then the second item was relative to the trash, it's in the lower level of the parking garage.
That's correct.
So I gotta believe it's coming out right where that, can you just on the screen there point with the parking garage entrances?
This is the parking garage entrance right here.
Okay, so the, the parking garage, the, the trash truck is going to come down your regular driveway.
That's right.
Pick up their items and then they're going to go out the fire truck escape route, correct?
Well, we, we assume that they're going to be arriving at a time when the uh. The uh open space parking is not occupied, right? And they'll be able to manage a turnaround and head back out to the same way.
Okay. So you think the, the only one that's going to use your back driver, which is pervious, which is pervious asphalt is really going to be a fire truck?
Yep. Well, there, there may be some need for maintenance vehicle from time to time or some big delivery, but. You know, most of the stuff that comes to this building will be in a box truck or smaller and they could uh drop off and pick up using the front entrance.
Great, okay. So like, um, I mean, today moving vans are smaller. They're not like eighteen-wheel tractor trailers. They don't go down that.
These are one and two-bedroom apartments. You just don't have that much stuff.
Agreed, agreed. Okay. That's fine. So to, so you think that the trash, the trash truck is gonna. Pick up the trash at that entrance, turn around and go back the same way they came in?
That's the idea. And that's basically how it works today.
Okay, got it. Thank you, sir. Um, and Jim Rand, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I had the same or similar question about the trash, but that means that there's gotta be. A way of moving the trash. From. The trash room. Which is, as you look at the drawing. And, and the right.
Yeah. This is a common.
Drag it through the garage till it gets to the entrance where the garbage truck can pick it up.
This is a common method used in multi-story uh facilities like this. You'll have. Uh, a trash chute on each floor that goes to the trash room. And on the morning of pickup, the management company will have it brought out to the driveway and they.
Yeah, fun.
There's compactors, they put it on carts, they pull it out.
Okay, thank you. Those are those dumpsters things that I usually, wheels?
Yeah.
Yep, so for you.
Uh, I think this is a good time maybe to bring uh Matt Pop, if he's available and ready, up to talk about landscape plan.
One other question, one other question real quick, with regard to the, the parking. Living facility. You're gonna share, I think thirty-nine spaces there right now. You're sharing fifty-three spaces.
That's correct.
How many total parking spaces are at the assisted living facility?
They have sixty-four exclusive spaces just for them that we do not share. Plus fifty-three of this pooled share. So they have a hundred and seventeen spaces that they have access to for the hundred and five assisted living.
Okay, so the hundred and seventeen total, um, and there's a hundred and one units there? Is that, is that my, my?
Hundred and five by my recollection.
Okay. All right, so I think.
You know, that's significantly overparked for an assisted living facility.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know. It's because it's, the parking is supposed to be. I think, I think we switched it when we did Atria to point eight-five. So if you had a hundred and five units and you have point eight-five, you only need to have. You know, eighty-nine parking spaces. And if you got a hundred and seventeen, you have twenty-something extra.
Yeah, you have a couple of different definitions for senior housing and assisted living in your regs with slightly different parking. Uh, the one we fall under again, we've provided those calculations on the parking data chart on the zoning site plan. Uh, so your zoning regulations uh require seventy-three spaces for that facility. And we also, and Kermit might get to it during his presentation or your viewer might get to it, but they've looked at industry standard data for buildings such as this as well.
I got you. I'm, I'm staring at now. It says fifty, yeah, you're. I think total required on the shared agreement is a hundred and seventy-three and you guys are providing two hundred and three.
That's correct.
Okay, and plus if it gets a shared agreement, it's not standalone, we can do a waiver of that, right Jeremy? Got it. Same way we do with all the other mixed-use things. Uh, that doesn't exist. Okay, I'm good. Any, all right, Chris, you're okay? Do a dryly anything? Jeff Ball, you okay? Jim Rand or? Okay, go ahead, Craig, sorry man.
Uh, sorry, I was slow to get on uh unmuted, but I just wanted to pick up on the, the provision for two handicap spaces. Strikes me as light. Uh, I, I think that's a.
On-site, so. Uh, I'll bring it back to the site plan. Um, you have to uh spread. The uh handicap spaces around the site. Uh, so. You know, you, you've, you've got to have them both in the surface parking or open field as well as in the garage field. I'll share the site plan again and show you where they are. We have a total of. Um. We'll have the two in the garage near the elevator. We're also going to have two. Uh, over here, uh, with walking access right into the front door. Uh, and we're going to have the one uh back here associated with the open space.
Is another one, there's another one right up that tree, Greg?
Oh yes, there you go. You're right, there is. There's one right here too. It was blocked by the tree in this view. So there's three up front.
Yep, good. Okay, I figured two is light and I don't know where I picked that up, but thank.
It, it's prescribed by uh the ADA regulations and the state regulations, how many we're supposed to have them. So we're complying with those, with those regs.
You were going to say something, Jeremy?
Nope.
Okay. Back to you, Craig.
All right, so I'll try again to see if uh Matt is out of his other meeting and available to present in this one. Uh. You there, Matt?
Yeah, I'm here. Could you hear me?
I can hear you just fine, Matt.
Okay, uh, I'm Matt Pop, landscape architect, environmental land solutions, prepared the landscape plan. I'm hoping that Craig uh could share that with us. While he's getting that plan up, I'm just going to go through, you know, the plant selection, uh shade trees, uh flowering trees, evergreen trees, shrubs. Go over just some of the site features at the sidewalk, the sidewalk courtyard, and then just touch on the uh lighting. So when you come into the entrance by the circular turnaround, we have, have a number of shade trees uh there. Those are mainly oaks right there, like it's Craig showing, and then we're adding two additional ones to the right. Uh honey locusts, they're wide-growing uh trees, provide uh shade for the parking lot, reduce thermal pollution. When you go along the uh top of the sheet, along the drive to the back, we have a row of. A red maples. They're fairly close together, so that's good for, you know, that would say dense uh screening for residents inside the building looking out. Uh between those uh, red maples in the building itself, it's kind of tough to see, but there's some smaller uh. Uh circles. Those are green giant armor of ideas, again, just to provide additional screening. Um, if you go uh towards the, the top of the sheet of that driveway. Up there, we have, there's some room up there uh where we could provide additional evergreen screening, mainly a Norway spruce. We have some. Uh, American hollies in there. And if you go down towards uh the woods, we have a couple of oak trees. Oaks are great for wildlife habitat. Um, and if you, we'll just continue along that strip going down. We have a number of native uh shrubs going right along that parking. Uh, row of parking down to the gazebo, uh somewhat deer, or deer resistant plants. Um. So that mainly cletra and um licothee. Um, in the courtyard. We have, the, the, the main tree there is birch. Uh, so we have a, a group, a grouping of birch trees. Um, they're kind of fairly planted close together. Um, and then, you know, along the building itself, around the entire building, it's, I would say densely planted with uh small flowering shrubs. Uh such as hydrangeas and evergreen uh ones uh too, such as rhodes and uh inkberry. Um, I think Craig might have touched on it earlier, but there's a sidewalk that kind of connects. Uh, there, right through there, it goes right through the site, is in front of the building, through there, through the courtyard, kind of snakes through the courtyard. And then goes down to the drive and excess is the woods. So somebody walking, you know, from. Uh, the, the, off the site could walk right through the site uh to the woods without having to walk, you know, on the uh, the, the access drive to the garage. Uh, in the courtyard itself, we do have a. Sitting areas, uh mainly be just benches and, and round tables, and there's uh some grilling stations in the center uh right there. Uh, the lighting uh consists of uh. It's, it's a twelve-foot high poles. It's a little bit different than the fixture that's out there. It's a very similar, I think it's maybe more um contemporary, more modern. Um, there's the detail there, got a straight edge to it, against this twelve-foot high. Uh, and there's a bollard right there. The bollard kind of matches the pole light. Um, there are downward lighting, uh LED, the both of them have a warm tone to it, three thousand K. Uh, I think the light, the bollards, three thousand K two, or just a little bit less than that. So it's a warm tone to the light fixture. Um, if you go to the, the back of the site towards the woods, there's three light poles. One, one, two, three, right along the edge of the parking. Uh, along the edge of the woods, and those will be shielded, uh so that we're not having light spill into the woods. Uh currently on existing, um. The existing building, that there's two of, you large floodlights that shine out over the parking lot and into the woods. So uh with this project, uh there'll be, you know, the woods will. Not uh receive that existing light pollution. So there'd be less uh light reaching the woods, which is a, a good thing. Uh, the bollards are mainly used in the, or just are used in the courtyard. And along that kind of fire access. So we didn't really want any tall or light poles in that area there. So we're just using the bollards. Um, they're, they're kind of lined along the walkway. Uh, so that's the landscaping, you know, quickly. Now, we are going to meet with a neighbor. Uh, to provide some additional screening uh from his house to the building. We're going to be meeting with them uh next week sometime. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah. Uh, I got a couple of quick ones, just on that one, um. We call it the fire drive, with fire access driving. Is that gonna have a Belgium block curb too, or some kind of, you know, decorative curve, curbing? I'm sorry, I said curbing.
Yeah, it, it needs to be edged with curbing to provide support with the drive. So we're proposing uh currently a flush curb on either side of the driveway to hold it tight.
Is that asphalt curb or is it like?
Right now, we're indicating a concrete curb. Uh, we were uh toying with making a stone curb where it's abutting the pavers at the amenity space in the drop-off.
Got it, okay. Um, and then with regards to, if you can pull up the site plan again, with regards to the, the area. Um, which is, I want to call it the park. Is, is there, is it going to be secured at all in any, in any way, shape or form? It seems like it's, it's a common walkway.
Uh, the, I mean, the park is open to the public, uh, from dawn to dusk, I think it's the regulations of the town, so.
But Matt just said the grills are going to be and whatnot?
Oh, the. That's in our courtyard itself.
The courtyard, yeah. Does that have kind of security at all?
Yeah. Not currently planned. They're right in the, the center of kind of where that, the walkway kind of snakes around. Uh, with the birch. So that's, they're right in that location there.
Right, so my, I guess my question is if someone's coming, if someone wants to walk from Old Kings Highway East Lane. Right, and go to Selic Woods, they're gonna walk down your new fancy sidewalk, or they, they're gonna walk down the old sidewalk from. One Parklands to the new southern, or three Parklands, cross, across the road and new sidewalk you're putting in, and then cut through this courtyard.
Correct. That's the intent. That's certainly a good point. We can consider that. Uh, uh, give you an, an answer next time if that's where we're going to stay. There's also the ability to use. Um, this portion of the driveway as well.
Right, because it just seems like if, 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 if I live at, you know, twenty-six East Lane, I can walk to Selic Woods from here. And we'll be going past grills on the way. To, to, that's, if that's the route, if that's the route that's intended for, for the quote-unquote general public to access the woods if they're walkers.
It's a good point. We'll take a look at that.
You know, and same with people that live at, at, at the LCB building. If they want to walk through, they're walking through that courtyard. Okay. Um, any other questions from commissioners at this point on any of the stuff we've gone over? Sounds good. All right.
We have more things to do. We'll do traffic and then we'll, we'll probably just um wrap up and get to your peer reviewers after that. But uh. Uh, with that, I'd ask uh Kermit Hua uh. To turn on his camera or come to the floor uh to present uh his findings on the traffic.
All right, thank you, Craig. Uh, for the record, my name is Kermit Hua, the traffic engineer uh from KW, KWH Enterprise LLC in Maryland, Connecticut. Uh, I'm a registered professional engineer in Connecticut and a national regi, nationally registered professional traffic operations engineer. Uh, with twenty-four years' experience in, in traffic engineering. There are a lot to cover. I, I will go over as quickly as possible. Uh. The chair and the commission members, feel free to interrupt me uh during my, during my presentation or afterwards. Uh, what I'm going to talk about briefly is a, the first, the traffic study itself. The second is the uh conformance with zoning regulations. Uh, third, I will respond to the uh PR review letter. Uh, the last thing I will touch on is uh I have seen a lot of comments about the uh. About pedestrian uh traffic on Old Kings Highway North. I will respond to that. Now, first thing, the traffic study. Uh, the first thing I look at is the net uh traffic impact during peak hours. So I looked at the three peak hours, you know, weekday commuter hours essentially, and also midday Saturday hours. Uh, the finding is really, we are reducing the peak hour trips compared to. Uh, office use under normal conditions, that is, uh, non uh pandemic conditions before the COVID situation. Uh, we are looking at a twenty-two trips for the morning peak hour for these apartments. Twenty-two, twenty-six for the weekday afternoon and twenty-six for the Saturday midday. That represents a eighteen trips reduction for the weekday morning peak hour, fourteen trips reduction for the weekday afternoon peak hour. And a trips increase for the Saturday midday peak hour, uh where you compare with the office use. So we are reducing uh the traffic impact. Uh, of this, this part of the site. Uh, the sec, the second thing I will touch on, because we are still in the pandemic, uh because of the COVID situation, I did accounts in May twenty-twenty-one. Uh, so the task is, the task for me is really to adjust accounts accordingly to remove the effect of the pandemic. What I did is uh I looked at two sources, uh DOT maintained a continuous count on. Uh, I ninety-five, you know, almost daily counts. So I checked that against the pre-pandemic counts at the same location. Uh, I, I just, assuming the same pattern holds for the uh interstate highway and the Old Kings Highway North. The second factor I consider is the, the seasonal difference. Obviously, I want to reflect, adjust the volume to the uh busiest month of the year, usually. Around July of the year. So I did some adjustment. I increased, essentially increased the uh counts I collected by about ten percent. So that's, and, and, and the other adjustment uh I made is the driveway volume, because uh the office building is not currently fully occupied. Uh, I don't know about the situation about the assisted living facility. I suspect probably also not fully occupied. So I use the IT data uh for those two land users to basically bump up the driveway, driveway volume. Assuming both facilities are operating at a normal conditions. So that's the, the basis, if you will, of the twenty-twenty-one uh traffic scenario I included in the report. And uh, now the next, I, you know, inflate that number to build year, assume the build year is twenty-twenty-four, that is the, the year during which. Uh, all the six-day units are built and occupied. And that add those trips on top of that and look at the level of service and trips. Uh, generally, there's no issues for traffic on Old Kings Highway North, both approaches. Uh, the approach, that intersection, you know, on, on top of the, uh, the ramp on the opposite side.
Can I have one second?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, in your report, I'm looking at page um eight and page thirteen. Are you kind of on page thirteen now?
Yes.
The one that says traffic impact study.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the, the one you talked about earlier was really page eight, where it talks about the difference existing conditions, and now we're going to page thirteen.
That, that is correct. Page is thirteen, if you look at a page thirteen, there are a bunch of tables. Uh, the second one from the bottom is the. The, the trips for the apartments, twenty, twenty. The, the trips for the apartments, twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-six, right?
Yep.
And the, 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 the last block of the table is the net changes from this development.
All right, because this to me is the most important item in the entire document.
Right, you know, because there are, there are some delays during peak hour for traffic coming out of the driveway, you know, that's.
Can we put that up on the screen? Can we put that up on the screen? Is that possible?
Uh, I, I think Craig doesn't have that. Uh, but if you look at the table three, Mr. Chair, you referred to on page twelve, oh, I'm sorry, page eight.
Yep.
Uh, look at the last line of page eight, that's Northbound Parklands Drive. That's the approach. You know, there are some existing delays, assuming the office and the assisted living facility are operating at a normal conditions during those peak hour. If you look at levels, we do have C, we do have F, and we do have E. That's a pre-existing condition. So. This project, you know, essentially for the weekday morning and Saturday mid peak hour, uh Saturday midday peak hour, if you look at pay. Table number six on page fourteen and compare with table number two. The, the weekday AM and Saturday is very similar, you know, the, the level of service is at the same, but delays are very similar. What changes it for the weekday afternoon peak hour, because we have so fewer trips. Uh, we are significantly reducing uh the weekday afternoon peak hour for traffic coming out of the driveway. But, you know. On the other hand, there are another contributing factor is, you know, in the afternoon, people are coming home, not getting out of driveway, leaving home. So. That's maybe a factor, but nonetheless, we're reducing uh the delays for the. Approach exiting the driveway during the weekday afternoon. So that's a, a huge improvement in terms of the operation at this side driveway. Uh, if I may continue is, uh, we, we, I also looked at the accident records uh for the three years before the pandemic, twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen. Uh, the state records show no records for accidents, uh certainly on Parkland's Drive and. No records for accidents on Old Kings Highway North along the frontage of the site. That's uh crash records. And also I looked at the side distance for, for drivers coming out of the driveway. And based on uh the speed limit, uh the speed data we collected uh for the earlier phase, for the assisted, assisted living part of the site. Uh, the requirements are according to DOT criteria at three seventy, three seventy-nine feet. Uh, for drivers looking west and three twenty-four feet for drivers looking east, and we meet both uh requirements. Uh, the last thing I want to touch on is uh we conform with zoning regulation. Regulations specifically section uh one thousand five point eight. Point A as Apple, one thousand five point D, one thousand five point E, one thousand twenty-five point three, one thousand twenty-five point four. Uh, now I will briefly touch on the uh response to the, the traffic reviewers, reviewers letters. Uh, there are some uh minor, you know, technical differences in technical approaches. Uh, uh, for example, as the, you know, percentage growth. Uh, yearly percentage growth, uh, you know, inflating the volume from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Uh, the reviewer suggests zero point six percent. I was using zero point nine, zero point five percent. So that really doesn't make much difference in terms of the results or the conclusion of the study. Uh, another minor uh difference of approaches, uh, you know, about which version of the highway capacity uh manual to use. Uh, the reviewer suggests use the newer version. I use a two thousand version, year two thousand version, which is the version DOT use uh in evaluating. Uh, you know, major traffic generators. If you go to the state uh. Uh, Oster side, that's the version they use. So I, I think both are right, that, that they don't make any uh differences in terms of the results, level service and. And anyway, so. And also on the parking, uh, the reviewer suggests uh the peak, uh the peak parking uh demand for both uses of ADA spaces. I was using one hundred one spaces for the both, for both users, but for both assisted living and the apartments. Uh, because we are having over two hundred spaces for both of them anyway, so that's really not an issue. What I want to emphasize from the reviewer's letter is uh two conclusions. I quote, "It is our opinion that the proposed development will have sufficient parking under a shared parking situation." That's number one. Number two, I quote, "The proposed residential development will have, will, will not have a significant impact to the study area intersection or surrounding roadways." So. So that, that's the two conclusions from uh your, the commission's traffic review. Now, the last point about uh, uh, the comments I've seen about the uh. Uh, traffic volumes on Old Kings Highway North. Uh, because I personally did all those three peak hour uh traffic counts, I actually collected. Uh, the pedestrian volume during those three peak hours. Here are the uh pedestrian volume I collected, adding the session of, adding the section of Old Kings Highway North and Parkland's Drive. For the weekday morning peak hour, I recorded two, two people, two pedestrians during an hour. For the weekday afternoon peak hour, I recorded three pedestrians. For the Saturday midday peak hour, I recorded zero pedestrian. So, you know, some of them are. You know, were clearly, you know, staff working at the assisted living facility. I saw them probably walking from the bus stop, you know, wearing some scrubs like. Uh, uh clothes. And from my observation, from my experience in the field, there really is very few people actually walking on uh. Old Kings Highway North during those peak hours. So that's the existing condition. Now, if you look at a future condition to project what a future uh. Uh, pedestrian volume condition uh will be like, obviously, we will have, you know, sixty uh units, but, you know. The thing I want to emphasize is that most of them, I think fifty-three units are market rate uh. Apartments. I think, you know, it's reasonable to assume those people are not constrained, because, you know, I, I think, I think relative to the state average. Uh, those rents probably, yeah, uh will be much higher than state average rents, you know. I think those people are not likely to be constrained for the lack of a reliable, you know, personal vehicle and uh. And, and as a result, take a bus, wo- walk to the bus station. Uh, so I, 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 I don't. Personally, I don't see a lot of those people, you know, walking to the bus station and use on daily basis. Maybe some of the seven uh residents living, the seven affordable units uh choose our route, but I think most of them not likely. So if I uh to project, what's the likely pedestrian volume will gen- will those sixty units generate, you know? If you like to look at a pure uh vehicular trips, I, I quoted previously twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-six. That's in a typical suburban setting with very few people walking or use alternative uh transportation. If I assume five percent of them, you know, instead of driving cars, say they walk to the bus station. So five percent of twenty-two, you know, you're looking at about a little bit over one trips per peak hour. It's similar situation, you know, twenty-six, twenty-six for the other two peak hours. So we are looking at probably adding one or two trips per peak hour. Really, it's nothing significant, you know. In terms of the pedestrian volume on uh. Old Kings Highway North. So personally, I don't feel uh potential pedestrian conflict on Old Kings Highway North is an issue. It's definitely just because the volumes are not there. Uh, so that, that's the thing I want to emphasize. I think, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for now, unless uh the commissioners have any questions.
Yeah, uh, just to follow up on traffic, the only other thing I wanted to point out, Kermit, was uh one of the uh peer reviews comments was the position of the stop bar in Parkland's Drive at uh Old Kings Highway North. For whatever reason, when it was striped uh previously, the stop bar is actually positioned. Uh, twenty-five feet away from the uh travel way on Old Kings Highway North. So if you actually obeyed the. Stop bar with your car, you wouldn't have much of a view to your left. Um, that's kind of an abnormal position for a stop bar. Uh, uh. Uh, we agree with the peer reviewers comment that it should be moved back to maybe about ten feet away from. Uh, the travel way of Old Kings Highway North, in which case uh the position of your car would enable you to see all, all the way over the other side of the bridge uh and get adequate sight distance. Um, I just wanted to add that uh relative to the traffic and parking discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank. Um, you're, you're all set, Kermit?
Yes.
Great. At, at this point, I'd like to call Michael Galante. Is Michael, there he is. Bingo. That's it. Um, Michael, if you want to, you know, give us your overview, since you're the best person to speak the same language as Kermit, that would be great. And then, um, commissioners, if anybody questions after that, we'll do that. And then just for a um editor's note or chairman's note. We're gonna get to the general public on this in about um ten minutes, because I think we want to hear from Joe Canis. Uh, next, after Mr. Galante, and then we can have some um public comment at this point. All right?
I have, I have maybe two minutes too before we go there.
You got it. Thanks, man. Okay, Michael Canis, welcome, sir. You're muted, buddy. Talk to yourself.
How's that?
Perfect.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Mike Galante, Hottsey and Hanover. And I'll be brief, uh, not to repeat numbers that were mentioned in the. Applicants Traffic Consultants uh presentation, but we prepared a review letter dated October fourteenth of this year. We reviewed both documents submitted by the applicant as well as the site plan uh for the site itself. That included the parking layout, the sidewalks that were talked about, the traffic conditions uh at the one intersection at Kings Highway North. Uh, the traffic counts, the no build, uh traffic volume, site traffic generation and so on. Um, generally speaking, uh, and it was touched on quite well. We reviewed every aspect of the actual traffic counts, the adjustments that were applied, uh, the expansion of the volumes to a future traffic condition. Site traffic generation and so on. We agreed to be simple and, and, and just kind of a summary. We agree with the baseline traffic lines used in the analysis. We agree with the expansion of the traffic volumes to a no, a future no build traffic condition. We had some minor comments and slightly different adjustment factors and so on. Uh, that really don't change the results of the analyses. But I think the key part of this whole traffic study and. Really the findings of that traffic study is you have an office building today. If it was fully occupied, the thirty-four thousand eight hundred and forty square feet of floor area. Would generate about forty trips during the morning and afternoon peak hours. And on a Saturday, when, you know, office buildings are generally empty. Uh, about eighteen trips during the midday peak hour. The proposed residential development at sixty units of rentals. Uh, would be about twenty-two trips in the morning peak, twenty-six in the afternoon peak, and about twenty-six in the Saturday midday peak. Those traffic estimates are, are not something that Kermit or I picked, it's really from the IT Trip Generation Handbook. It's a document that the state of Connecticut uses. And essentially every traffic engineer uses, and we're pretty much obligated to use it unless, unless there's some better local information. But what that says is that the proposed redevelopment of the site from office to residential will reduce the traffic generated and added to the roadway system. Uh, and as mentioned, eighteen trips during the morning would be a reduced uh, uh, traffic, fourteen trips during the afternoon peak would be the reduction. But there would be an increase of eight vehicles on a Saturday. Obviously, residential is generating some traffic while an office building is not generating that much. That has a, a benefit to operations at the Kings Highway North intersection, which is stop sign control. And yes, the results of the analysis show there are delays exiting Kings, uh, uh, Parkland uh approach to in section of Kings Highway. And it's operating a level service F during the, I believe, the afternoon peak hour. Um, keep in mind, the volume of traffic exiting the Parklands Drive approach is a very low volume. While the volume on Kings Highway is a much higher volume. And the model would simply show that the lower volume coming out of the side street has a difficult time exiting. And you pretty much go to a level service F fairly quickly. But keep in mind that it's a low volume of traffic, and while that's a delay, um, it's not that really long a delay because of the low volume of traffic. Now, the benefit is going from office to residential, that. Delay on a weekday afternoon, which is a critical time period in this case, is reduced by about fifty-five seconds on average per vehicle. So it's, it's improving. That level service F, it's still an F, but it's, uh, it's, there's a reduction of delay by fifty-five seconds. And that's a significant benefit to the redevelopment of the site. So. My findings uh is that the residential development uh has a benefit to the neighborhood by reducing site traffic on area roadways and reducing the delays coming out of the side street, which is serving the assisted living and this new residential development. So we're comfortable with the results of the analyses, although we had some minor comments, uh, that doesn't really change the results of the analysis and the findings. With regard to parking, I, I feel there's more than enough parking, certainly with the shared parking component between the assisted living and the residential. Um, and is more than enough parking to accommodate um the, the need, if you will. We looked at it uh as an hourly condition over a typical weekday and a, and a weekend. And there's more than adequate parking provided. So we're comfortable with the provide, the parking provided. And we're also comfortable with the layout, uh, the access to the front of the building for drop offs and so on. Access to the existing parking garage, if you will, to the back of the building. And we're, we're comfortable with the emergency access drive around the building uh to serve the emergency vehicles, in this case, maybe leaving. Or potentially arriving if there's an emergency such as a fire on that side of the building. So overall, we're comfortable with e- every aspect of the site plan, the traffic report, the findings. And I think more importantly, and most important, is the sidewalk connection between the new residential building in the back. Along the assisted living and tying into those existing sidewalk conditions as you get closer to Kings Highway North. So. That's a, a, a quick summary. Uh, we went through all the details of the analyses that included, you know, site visits during the right time of day, uh, you know, in the afternoon at five o'clock and so on, which I did myself, so I wanted to see it. Uh, and agree.
You need to mute yourself.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Uh, sorry, Mike. Nope, okay.
Okay. And then that, that's, that's the findings of our analysis, which was pretty detailed, but it was a, a straight vote report, and then we're happy with the results and we agree with the results. And I can certainly answer questions now or later on.
Great, thank you, Mike. Um, I'm good with your conclusions. Jeff Ball, you have any questions for uh Mr. Galante, Jeff George or Jim?
I think I just, I think I have a general question. Is there a sidewalk that goes from the entrance of. Parklands down to the apartment or proposed apartment complex? And the only reason why I ask is can A, I, I guess the other thing that we didn't. Really address is can a school bus get down, turn around, pick up kids and then get back out?
I can, I can actually answer that question if, if you don't mind. Uh, one hundred percent, we are proposing to have a connection from the apartment building to the intersection of Parklands and Old King Highway via sidewalk off the driveway. That's shown on the plans. That's a combination of what's already there and what we're proposing. Uh, the school bus question, I actually reached out to Kate Barbieri, who is the Transportation Director for the Darien Public School System. Uh, and talked to her about how busing would work if we have a handful of school kids in the apartment building. Um, school buses do not go down dead end roads anywhere in town. They don't go down Fairmead, they don't go down Circle Road, they don't go down Littlebrook, they will not go down Parklands. Uh, they stop on the collector streets. They do that very specifically because they don't want to turn around in these cul-de-sacs anywhere in town. So if uh school kids are added in this apartment building, they would be picked up at the intersection of Parkland's Drive, Old Kings Highway North, uh, the, the school bus would stop there.
Thank you.
And the, the town of Darien just put a brand new sidewalk in going from the post road over I ninety-five. Uh, Old Kings Highway to this front door. Okay, Jim Rand, George Riley, George Riley, you like Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to see if we could elicit a comment from Mr. Hua, uh, and maybe Mr. Galante, if he wants to. As to the uh impact of some additional traffic coming from East Lane. Where soon there will be ten residents with certain disabilities and maybe some staff people living and. You know, daytime traffic for people who are serving those two new residences and all. Uh, and there's, I don't think there's a, a sidewalk there, so. Um, that, does that impact any consideration about the safety of those folks uh coming and going? Uh, relative to Parklands, I, I just noticed that uh your, your map only shows uh, you know, I ninety-five, but it doesn't show East Lane. So I, I did want to get a comment from you folks about that.
If I may, Commissioner.
Yeah, Mike Galante, I didn't look at that specifically as far as any additional traffic on East Lane. Uh, so I really can't answer that. There's a change, but you know, this project is reducing traffic at the intersection of Parks, Parkland's uh lane and Kings Highway. So generally speaking, this, I don't want to say it's safer, but there's less traffic and less uh conflict. So it, it may result in a better condition. But it's specifically to those two units that you're referring to, I didn't look at that in, in particular now. I think we looked at that some time ago, actually, un- under that application.
What about pedestrian traffic relative to those? Because of the people that live there, ninety percent are, are, don't have driver's license, is what I'm told. Or won't have driver's license.
I, as far as this review of this application I was speaking about tonight, no, I didn't look at that uh at all. Um, as part of this.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, I'll.
Uh, yeah, uh, I just, uh, Commissioner Riley, I just heard, uh, from Greg, uh, Craig, actually today about this project on East Lane. Uh, my understanding is there, the site, uh, for this residential development, uh, there are, are existing uses. Is that daycare facility or something of that nature?
Yeah, that was a past, uh, use.
It's been shut. Okay. Okay. So, uh, so about 12 units, you know, just in terms of, uh, the trips, I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, it's about a fifth size of our development, assuming the two, you know, share the trip rate, 22 divided by fifth, uh, so about four or five trips, you know, per peak hour for, 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 uh, 12 units. Uh, not a significant amount. By the way, I, I, in my earlier statement, I did mention is I adjusted volume, uh, on Old King's Highway North upwards to reflect a condition with other pandemic. Uh, so yeah, so you, you are adding four or five trips to that. I, I, I assume in terms of the net percentage increase to the volume to King North, Old King's Highway North, it's not a, a big amount. I don't have the number out of, off the top of my head, but I, I think, you know, if you add that number to the intersection and rerun the analysis and look at, uh, level service and delay, the results will be similar. Uh, Mr. Chair mentioned, uh, you know, some of the, uh, those residents, they, they cannot drive, uh, whether they will walk, uh, uh, Old King's Highway North, maybe, but you know, my, my, my personal experience, uh, being out there is, uh, although we do have a good, uh, sidewalk and crosswalk connections, uh, Old King's Highway North, it's, you know, because of the presence of the highway ramp and also you have to go on top of the highway. It's not a uh, pleasant walking experience. You know, you walk on the bridge, you can just feel the vibration from the highway. Uh, I don't know how many people from that may walk on that. So like, maybe, maybe, maybe not. So that's, that's the best I can offer.
Yeah, maybe the best thing to do, Mr. Riley, is, um, you've posed a question, we'll consider it and provide a written response, you know, on, uh, with the assumption we're leaving the hearing open tonight.
Fair enough. Yeah, I, I just, you know, just wanted to elicit some comment about the safety factors and, and, and I, I hear Mr. Hua, Mr. Galante, and I appreciate it. Thanks.
Jim Rand, any questions, sir?
Yeah, just, uh, one, I don't, I don't know how much influence we have uh, with the proper authorities or the, or how much influence the applicant has, but this business about the stop bar, uh, at the intersection of, uh, of a Parklands and, uh, uh, and Old King's Highway. I strongly urge that the whoever made the recommendation, that be implemented. I had my office in Parklands for years. And with that stop bar, that's what it's called, you can't see to the left soon enough to be able to distinguish between cars coming down from the post road across the thruway bridge. And uh, you can't distinguish between the ones that are intending to turn left on the thruway ramp, the ones that are uh, intending to go down, uh, uh, go down Old King's Highway. I've had a couple of near misses with people who couldn't make up their mind quickly enough.
We, we agree with you. We're happy to accept that as a condition of approval. And I'll also reach out to the Department of Public Works, uh, in the interim to see if we can get a more inclusive response to their cooperation.
Great.
Mission, uh, Craig.
Yeah, what's that? The, yeah, the traffic authority, police commission, yeah.
Yeah, the traffic authority. They would, uh, I think make a final determination.
Well, we'll, we'll have staff also reach out to the local traffic authority here on, on the PNC end. Yeah, thank you. Um, Michael, you're good. Mr. Hua, you're, you're good. Craig, you're good. Move on.
Yeah, if you want to do Joe and then come back to me.
That'd be great. Yeah. Yeah. Cause we want to get a couple, couple, public comments into Joe Canis. There he is. Joe Canis is around. Welcome, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh, for the record, uh, Joseph Canis, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, uh, with the firm of Ty and Bond. I was, um, our firm was retained by the commission to do a peer review of the sediment erosion control, land filling and regrading and stormwater management aspects of the application. Uh, I attended a field visit, uh, with, uh, planning and zoning staff on, uh, the morning of September 21st, 2021. And I issued a letter with my initial comments on October 4th, 2021. Uh, just a real quick overview, uh, from a stormwater management perspective, uh, this project, because it does have, this particular site has an engineered detention system on it now. Uh, the fresh metal approach is not required, so the applicant can take credit for impervious coverage that is currently existing on the site. Um, also, uh, also wanted to point out that the applicant has used, uh, rainfall depths from, uh, NOAA Atlas 14, which are uh, more stringent than the town's drainage manual. So, uh, there is some additional layer of conservancy built in there. Uh, and the increase in the impervious, impervious coverage on the site is mitigated by stormwater measures, including infiltration and porous pavement. So you, uh, do meet the MS4 requirements for, uh, directly connected impervious cover. Uh, the project, uh, the application will also eliminate the cave leak off into the woods on the south, uh, the, uh, parking lot to the south of the building, which is a benefit, uh, because that water is currently discharged untreated, whereas, uh, under the proposal, it will, uh, be treated by the onsite stormwater management system. So my October 4th letter had, uh, a, a, a series of comments, uh, you know, they were all generally, uh, minor or moderate in nature, nothing that really, uh, impacted design in a significant manner. Um, the, and those comments were centered around the, uh, confirming the hydraulic capacity of the pipes, uh, the proposed storm drainage system. I had a couple of comments about constructibility, uh, one about a manhole size, uh, making sure it can accommodate the number of pipes that were entering the manhole. Uh, much, uh, more minor comments, uh, about consistency between details and notes, uh, on those details. There were a couple of material callouts that were slightly different. Uh, a, a number of comments on maintenance and operation, uh, for example, um, making sure that the easement language would cover, uh, stormwater infrastructure in the proposed easement expansion area in case ever needed to be maintained in the future. Um, I also asked for a, a stormwater maintenance and operation plan, which was provided. Um, also, uh, in, in, uh, review of the conditions on the existing infrastructure to be reused, there's a, uh, 24 inch storm drain that, uh, discharges from the southwest corner of the site into Dunlap Pond, uh, that will be now be videotaped. I, uh, had some questions about the pipe beneath the building, uh, and to see if, uh, the applicant had explored other options than they had, and that's detailed in their response. As well as some, uh, comments that, uh, Mr. Flaherty already discussed regarding, uh, trash hauling, uh, generator fuel tanks, uh, and temporary trail access. I also had comments about stormwater quality, uh, regarding the effectiveness of the structures, especially for those structures that are near some of the proposed retaining walls. What I didn't want to happen was, uh, you know, for the, for the stormwater infiltrating out of the, uh, underground chambers to bleed through the wall. So that would effectively short circuit the, uh, the infiltration system. That's been addressed. I also had an additional comment about, uh, pre-treatment to avoid, uh, clogging some of the chambers, uh, specifically the, uh, proposed system on the east side of the building. That's been addressed. I also, uh, a comment about placing an additional inlet to avoid concentrated runoff flowing across a sidewalk on the east side of the building. That was addressed. Had some comments about, uh, sediment erosion control, uh, wanted to make sure that all the tree removals were shown. Uh, also, um, asked the applicant about their, uh, approach to the rock removal. They do intend to do some blasting, but the approach will be, uh, consistent with, uh, industry standard, uh, you know, pre-blast surveys, seismograph monitoring. Uh, so that, that, that approach is standard. Um, and also, uh, the addition of a sediment trap, uh, just because of the size of the site, it is over one acre that'll be disturbed. Uh, the Connecticut DEP, uh, erosion and sediment, uh, guidelines do require a sediment trap. That has been added to the plans. I also had some, uh, miscellaneous comments, uh, regarding, uh, fences and guide rails, uh, especially because of the presence of the retaining walls uh, and steep slopes on the, uh, west side of the driveway. Uh, so, uh, based on that October 4th letter, I got, I received responses on October 12th. And, uh, I issued an updated letter on October 18th with the disposition of, uh, the comments that I had in my initial letter. And the comments, uh, have been addressed. Uh, there are some very small issues that remain. Um, for example, uh, the sump depth, uh, for the pre-treatment, uh, for that eastern um, infiltration system. Uh, the applicant's proposing two foot sumps, uh, but the Darien Drainage Manual requires four foot deep sumps. Uh, also, uh, the applicant has assumed an infiltration rate for that eastern system, which makes sense because it's under the proposed building. You really can't test under it. Uh, so as a potential condition of approval, uh, if, if, when the building is demolished, do, um, I have asked on the performer test just to confirm their initial assumption. Um, and then just a minor, you know, discrepancy on the notes on a detail. And, uh, last but not least, and they may very redress this, the, uh, stormwater maintenance plan, uh, you require, your, uh, regulations require that it be signed and sealed. It could very well have been, it might've been embossed. I was reviewing an electronic copy, so the embossment wouldn't, uh, show up on the, uh, electronic copy, obviously, but, uh, overall, um, I'm satisfied that the, uh, stormwater management, sediment erosion controls and, uh, land filling and grading are consistent with the town regulations.
Thank you, sir. You, you, you got the, you got the signed and sealed. You didn't see that on the electronic. You're thorough. Got it. Um, Commissioners, any questions for, um, Mr. Canis before we turn it over to Mr. Flaherty to answer his comments? Jim, Jim's okay. Jeff's okay. George's okay. All right. Joe, I think I, I appreciate it. You know, you, you, you know exactly what's inside of our, our manuals and our regulations. Um, and you checked all the boxes that I can see. Thank you. Um, I didn't see the one comment, but if you could just stick around in case anybody has any questions from the general public. Um, Craig, you want to add something before we?
I think, yeah, I'm not going to respond to, to any of the minor comments. I think they're self-explanatory. I, I will say, I usually only sign that document when it's final after construction, but I'm happy to provide the signed version of the draft that we have. Uh, uh, I do want to say, uh, uh, Attorney Hennessy mentioned, uh, uh, the two other studies in the record, we have the Goman in York, April 2021, evaluation of property values, uh, that found no negative impact on property values and actually likely a positive impact. Uh, and then the acoustic distinction study dated September 23rd, 2021, which found noise in the immediate vicinity will actually be reduced. And last thing I wanted to mention is, um, uh, Bob Gillen did, uh, invite neighbors to an informal meeting last week, um, uh, which would tell on October 13th, we did have three uh, neighbors attend that. So we got a preview of, of, of some of the comments and concerns, uh, in the neighborhood. Um, you know, at the end of the road, concerns about height and views and light, uh, trespass and landscaping, uh, which makes sense. And, um, uh, for, uh, Pam Mafucci at two Parklands Drive, I'm sure you'll hear from her. She's concerned about, you know, pedestrian, vehicular, uh, traffic, uh, safety and, 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 um, because she shares Parklands Drive with, uh, both the assisted living facility and this proposed building. Uh, there were also, uh, you know, the general statement of LCB not being, uh, what, uh, they imagined it would be when it was, uh, approved after it got built. Um, and there, and there were some concerns about, uh, runoff coming off of LCB, uh, and moving over to Park, to Parklands Drive and one Fairmead. Um, I took a walk with Bob Gillen on Friday morning and, and there's some validity to that concern as well. There's a couple of, uh, at Great Basins that are not collecting uh, the roof area that they were designed to collect. And so there's some roof area over there, uh, bypassing the drainage system. So, um, Bob is going to work with LCB to try to get that addressed. I think there's some minor improvements that could be made to, to put some belts and suspenders on that. Um, but, uh, you know, uh, we're here to listen. We're here to listen to the public. We're here to listen to the neighbors. Uh, if there's something within, uh, the applicant's reach to, uh, adjust or provide, um, uh, we definitely want to hear about that because we will consider it. Um, that was really the end of our presentation.
Great. Thank you, Craig. I have two quick questions for both, um, Canis and, and Craig. With regards to the generator, is that, um, diesel or gas or propane?
It'll be diesel and the tank will be inside.
It's part of, it's part of the superstructure of the generator. Okay, that's fine.
It might be, but it's in the same room.
Yeah. No, I've seen those. And then Joe Canis, um, Mr. Flaherty, when he was talking about his, um, drainage report that those guys put together, he wanted to make sure that we double checked with you that said all water runoff from this project is all going to go, um, towards, um, I'm going to call it Dunlap Lake and none of it go towards Fairmead Drive. Was that, uh, can you confirm that statement?
Yes, that, uh, I, I can confirm that based on my review.
Okay.
This only drains towards the west.
Every stitch of water goes from this building towards the west. Great. Okay.
Right.
What, what I would like to do, right, Jeremy, is, um, is open up to the public for initial comments. And I got a stake in suspicion. We are not closing this hearing tonight. Um, so the public will have another bite at the apple. Um, at, at the end of this tonight, I think we could probably decide if Mr. Galante or Mr. Canis have to come back again. Um, I don't want to make that decision at this point. But, um, it's now 11 o'clock. It's 10 o'clock. So we've been doing this for two hours. Let's see if we can, um, open up to the general public. Okay. Commissioners, you all good with that? Good. All right. Um, with that said, would anybody from the general public like to speak to this application? If you can, if you can turn your microphone on, raise your hand, turn your camera on, put your name in the chat box, um, and you'll be recognized.
Hey, guys. Pamela Mafucci. Can you hear me?
Be sure it can, Pamela. Just give us your name and your address and your affiliation, please.
Great. Pamela Mafucci, two Parklands Drive. Um, I'm a resident, the only house on Parklands Drive.
Yep, sure.
The two topics I'm most concerned about are vehicular safety and pedestrian safety. So safety is the first topic. And then runoff and drainage. And I'll start with traffic because I appreciate what everyone said and the studies you guys have done, but I live here. And I'm seeing what's happening on a daily basis and I'm seeing the growth of what's happened over the 18 years that I've lived here. And so it, it feels like a lot of these studies are based on full occupancy of buildings, which has never been the case on Parklands Drive. So that's one consideration. The second consideration that we didn't talk about is the increase in police vehicles, ambulances and fire trucks coming up and down the street. Um, as a result of the assisted living facility. The other piece tied to people on foot are an increase in elderly in wheelchairs, walkers with, um, people helping them to walk up and down Parklands. I heard a lot of conversation about, um, people walking up and down Old King's Highway, but didn't hear any reference to foot traffic on Parklands. And that foot traffic right now mostly is elderly. Um, and I think, uh, a significant number of people working at the I-95 rest stop. Um, so stuff for you guys to think about that I didn't really hear about, uh, in some of the studies that were presented out tonight. Uh, the other thing about traffic that I would say, uh, is the street and the design of the street doesn't feel appropriate for the amount of vehicles coming up and down the street. We talked about the stop sign. You guys talked about the sidewalk that was added. I think an unintended consequence of that sidewalk that was added is a significant swing of vehicles that come into the street that pushes them out onto the other side of the street. So there's a lot that was changed about the road that I'm not sure makes it right sized for its current use and the amount of traffic going up and down.
Okay, um, let me see, we check off a couple of items. With regards to, um, full occupancy, it, it, I don't have the numbers, but I can probably get it. Um, I, I think the Parklands, the, the LCB building is at least 90% occupied. Um, and that is, that's called a stabilized occupancy. The office building, yes, today it's, it's not fully occupied. I can tell you that the 36,000 square foot building was at least 80% occupied a couple of years ago, uh, before a major tenant left or is leaving. Um, with regards With regards to Parkland Drive, and I'm going to let the professionals try to tackle that piece. After your house, Parkland Drive becomes a private road. So when you're talking about the drive's not wide enough or the road's not wide enough, are you talking about it by your house? Or after you get past the pillars that say, you know, Parkland's Park?
I'm talking about off of Old Kings Highway, entering Parkland's Drive. So you're coming over the bridge where you guys added that sidewalk you referenced off of Old Kings Road. Then an unintended consequence of the addition of that sidewalk is that you have to swing out further towards that stop sign that there's that blind spot that we all agreed upon. So cars are set back, you can't see, and you've got cars swinging super wide. So they're almost coming onto where a vehicle is stopped. There's a significant problem there that needs to be addressed. In addition to the actual stop sign being moved, I think someone needs to address the width of that space and the swing out that is required by a vehicle to get into the street.
Okay. Michael Galante, can you take a shot at that, please?
Yeah, again, Mike Galante, are you referring to the width of Parkland Drive, Elena, as you come in from Kings Highway being too wide? I'm just curious. I wanted to just understand. Concerned.
Being too narrow.
Narrow.
And so what's happening is vehicles that are essentially turning right onto Parkland's Drive are swinging wide towards where a car would be stopped at that stop sign. If you look at, actually, someone had a drawing that dimensioned that entrance. And if you actually look at the drawing, you could see what I'm describing illustrated.
Well, I'm looking at the aerial, actually, on my other computer, and I've been there. It seems to be a very wide throat to the intersection. And I think being so wide, it actually increases the speed of the vehicle turning into Parkland's Drive.
Can you pull the visual up and show me what you're seeing?
Looking at an iPad at the moment.
Oh, then maybe someone else can that has the visual that was shared earlier.
Okay. Or Craig, you want to put that up on the screen, the initial, initial, initial one?
I could. I also, you know, I'm happy to hear all these comments and, you know, give ourselves the time to provide thoughtful responses. I will call up, since we're talking about it, that aerial.
Okay. No, as standard course, we do take down the comments, or you take down the comments, and then the next meeting you'll come back.
I think it's more helpful for everyone to actually have us, you know, provide a considered response versus just an off-the-cuff response.
Okay. Okay. So Pam, are we going to look at those two items or have the team look at those two items?
Yeah, let's go back to the foot traffic conversation and the sidewalks. Let's talk a little bit about, and, you know, I'll talk specifically about what's happening out in front of my house and then would also like to talk about what happens once you get through the pillars that you're referring to as private property. Because yes, there's a sidewalk that was added onto Parkland's Drive. It's, looks great, and we're getting a significant amount of foot traffic from people coming off of the bus, traveling down to 95's rest stop through some weird unintended sidewalk space that I've complained about. It's not a sidewalk. People just are basically trumping through the woods to get to their. It's not safe, but it is what it is, right? And so you have that sidewalk, and then if you are trying to get to Selig Woods, you have to cross over that sidewalk and onto the other side of the street to get to the additional sidewalk that exists with the assisted living facility. And then the proposal is to extend that sidewalk. The crossover between where the sidewalk is in front of my house and where the sidewalk is near the assisted living facility, I think needs to be marked more effectively, needs to be a safer place. I did it myself when I went to the town, to the meeting that Bob held. And it's not an easy thing to do, and I'm not an 80-year-old person in a wheelchair. So, you know, I don't know if we need to mark it more effectively, if it needs to be signed more effectively, but it just doesn't feel significant enough. A FedEx truck nearly hit me walking across the street in the dark. So I think there's something there that needs to be looked at.
Okay. We will take that into consideration. And Craig and the other team members are also looking at that stuff. We'll mark it down. Okay?
Yeah, and as far as foot traffic, Pam, I'm just going to support my neighbor here. No, we don't do that? No, okay, sorry.
We'll recognize you, and then you can speak, but it's your turn. Okay?
Sounds good.
You good for now, Pam?
No, I want to talk about drainage and runoff because that is the other sort of big nugget of concern that I have on this project. I have a significant issue with water in the front of my house that is runoff from the assisted living facility. And again, I am not a, and I talked to Craig a little bit about this, a professional in this space, but this is a new problem that I hypothesize comes from that. And I have this other, like, working theory that some of the bridge work that happened on 95 could be some of the result of my problem. Regardless, I have cooling water, and I've sent pictures to Craig, to Bob, to you guys. And if some of you need them, I'm happy to send them to you. They'd illustrate a significant problem on my side. A problem on my side that then causes a problem behind me that I'm sure my neighbors will talk about, but it is completely unmanageable. And I think what happened with the assisted living facility was I was sold one thing and the reality is another. And now we're talking about increased building coverage in this new project and an increase in impervious coverage. It, to me, equals a bigger problem from a drainage perspective for my property. So I don't know how to feel good about this, given that I have a significant problem based on that first project that hasn't been addressed or managed. And now you're looking to add more coverage to Parkland's Drive that could impact me in a negative way.
Okay. We'll make sure Agent Teal knows about that, too, right? He's Public Works. Did you ever reach out to Agent Teal? Just out of curiosity, Pam?
No.
Okay. He's Public Works, so he's the guy that's supposed to watch that stuff, too. Okay, anything else you want to add?
I think that'll do it for me.
Okay. Then hopefully we'll get some answers if you come back to the next meeting. Okay? And next person that would like to speak, Christina, I think you chimed in once before. You're on mute, man. Do I mute? You're off mute?
All right, long distance. Hi, good evening. I'm sorry about that. So I did want to say something about the traffic because the traffic studies are, I feel.
Can you just identify first, please?
Oh, sorry. Christina Orsi LaRoe. We own two properties on Fairmead, one at 23 and one at 9. Obviously, 23 will be more impacted by this. I have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. My first question, and I want to talk specifically directed Craig Flaherty.
Direct the question to me, then we'll put it.
Oh, okay. So Craig said that we had a change in lot coverage from, by 1.8%. Is that 1.8% over the whole seven-plus acres or 1.8% over the 3.9 acres? That is this particular parcel that's the overlay zone?
Okay. We'll get your answer to that next.
That's question one. Question two is, the overlay zone, is that is just to take a DOR 5 into a residential? Is that correct?
Jeremy's going to answer that one.
Tina, you're correct in that there used to be two DOR, Designed Office Zones, DOR 1 and DOR 5. Those were combined a few years ago to just be Designed Office.
Okay.
This overlay zone only applies to Designed Office properties. So this used to be the zone for Designed Office. This overlay would allow the construction of multifamily housing.
Okay. And then within this overlay zone, we're asking for a variance so that the property doesn't have, no. So the overlay zone says you get to use commercial setbacks even though it's a residential property?
Yes.
You're converting it to a residential property, but you've given this overlay zone commercial setbacks. Is that correct?
I believe, and Craig can talk a little bit at the next meeting about the difference between the setbacks in the Designed Office Zone and the setbacks in the adjacent, I think Fairmead is in the R1 Residential Zone.
That's correct. So we're getting a height differ, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, because I see him putting his hand behind his ear. So we're getting a height differential. In other words, Craig said that this building would be 38 feet high on average, and I'm wondering, what?
35 feet high.
30, okay.
It's gone from 28 to 35.
He said, yes, 28 to 35 on average does not include the gables because those are entitled to cover your mechanicals. I get that. And I'd like to know how high the senior living facility is. And is that 35 feet from grade to the top of the gable? How tall is that? I mean, because where are you measuring that from? Because when you look at the measurements on the plans, and this is why the neighbors were confused, is, and I was very much for the senior living facility, as everybody knows. I thought that would be a great thing, but we were all surprised at the building because we thought it was going to be X number of feet, and it's 80 feet high from the driveway up to the roof gable. So that doesn't sound at all residential to us, and it is, Jeremy, and you can shoot it with a transit. I paid someone to do that. So I'm trying to figure out why, you know, what are we going to get here? Is it really going to be 35 feet high? Is that from grade? What are we really going to be looking at? Because that's a big concern to us.
I'll let Craig at the next meeting discuss the height as measured. But the way we measure building height in the town of Darien is we measure from the average grade. And for something with a peak roof, we measure from the average of the highest peak and the highest E. So Craig will do the calculation.
No, I understand the blend. And I built enough houses, what, 60 houses? I'm not ignorant. But what I'm trying to get is, what's the highest point going to be from grade on this building? And does this project really fit in with the character of a residential neighborhood on the park? That, I think that that's a big concern that the neighbors have. That we feel very much like you have all approved this before we've made our comments. We can't, I just was trying to get online. We're talking about, we've talked about this, we've agreed on this, we approved that. And we're all like, well, that's fantastic, but we feel like our comments weren't taken. They're very much go to Bob Gillan and cut your own deal about planting. And so, of course, we are all concerned about screening. We're concerned about planting. We're concerned about grading. We're concerned that Darien is overdeveloping. We're concerned that the, one of the things that you said to me, Jeremy, that really upset some of us is, and I talked to you about, because you know I'm very for affordable housing, and I said, Jeremy, why aren't we doing better planning for affordable housing? And your words to me were, and I wrote them down, I was so shocked, you said, "Well, why should the town put money towards affordable housing when builders are willing to do it?" Well, why isn't, aren't you, as our, you are our Planning and Zoning Chief Officer? Why aren't we planning for more affordable housing? Why are we letting builders just put it in in this corridor up by our end? I know it's going to be all through town and as it should be. I don't like, I don't like it just lumped in one space. But I feel very strongly that this development is too big for this spot. So my, and this leads to the next question, which is, we have a 3.915-acre parcel, which includes a tremendous amount of wetlands, and in fact, some of that is under the pond. So what is the real size of a build, what is the buildable square footage of this parcel? And what is the real coverage of actual buildable land here?
You just cut off, Christina. Christina, you just cut off, Christina? Hit your button with your papers.
You can tell I don't do this much. Sorry, guys. Thanks for bearing with me. And I'm deaf as a doorpost and don't have my hearing aids in, so I'm hoping you can hear me. I'm screaming to hear myself.
You're doing great.
So what I'm trying to get a handle around is if we have of the 3.9 acres that are this parcel, how much of that is usable land? And how much of that usable land is hardscape? And how much of that usable land is porous? Because of course, we all, on September 1st, realize that, I don't want to know if you want to call it global warming or what, but we're going to be having a lot of rainstorms. And we're going to see a lot of erosion of land into what's now, I guess, Dunlop Lake. I'd never heard it called that before, but, you know, I don't really know. And I'm concerned about a lot of things. We're going to have a lot of roof, a lot of runoff. I'm not hearing how many gallons that these, is there a Coltech system there? What are the actual gallons? You know, what are we going to do if there's a big rain? And what are we going to do if the system fails? Now, I was very pleased to hear about a generator, and I was very pleased to hear that it was diesel because those are, A, safe, you can put a match in diesel and it won't blow up, so that's safe in a building. But I feel that this is too big a project for this space. When you look at how much impact this is going to have on this little tiny, because the usable space there is really very small. And I really object to the fact that our builder is going to individual neighbors and saying, "If you agree with this, Manny, Passy, Marty, or whoever it is, I don't know who's getting the land, but I'm going to give you special trees." No one's called me up, Matt Pop, and said, "You want trees." I mean, certainly I know Environmental Land Solutions, I use them a lot in Token Eek. So, you know, I don't like how this is played out. I like the idea of development. God knows we have the housing shortage. But I feel that this particular project is not in keeping with our neighborhood. And then there's a few other things. I know that you can't answer these tonight. But if we're going to do a development like this, why aren't we having accessible units? You go over to Avalon, and they're finally putting in accessible units. I've heard about accessible parking, but I haven't heard about accessible units. And certainly that's a, I know that David Genovese is very generously, in his very gracious manner that he always does, is doing this fabulous facility near us on East Lane. That's great. But there are people that are not needing that kind of a facility that do need accessible units. So have we considered that? I mean, I just feel like this is, I don't feel like it's as well-thought-out, the part, you've done a lot of studies, but I feel like there's a bigger, a bigger thing that could happen here that would be more beneficial. And, but my biggest concern at this particular moment is, what is our real lot coverage? What is the real usable land? What are you really doing over there? Because Craig keeps putting the numbers on the nine-acre parcel. I want to hear about this 3.9-acre parcel. I want to hear about what the usable land is there. I want to hear about the Coltech systems, wherever your infiltrate is. I mean, it's just, there's a lot going on, and I haven't heard actual details that make me comfortable. And then I saw a measurement from the building to my house and my neighbor's house across the street, Passy Marty. And I'm looking at that, and I'm going, well, that is really not the distance. Because when we took our tape measure with a land surveyor, and we're like, well, we're a lot closer to that than you're telling us because you have it from the farthest corner to the corner of our property, not, you know, it's like to our house. Like, how are you measuring? So there's a couple of, a couple of numbers there that I don't agree with. And I think I'd like to know how those measurements were done. I can't speak to across to the house across the street. But certainly our house is closer than what he's saying. You know, he took it from the far corner where I guess the gym or some group space will be on the first floor. And, yeah, and I don't, I don't really know how we're getting such a tall building. It's just not in keeping with our neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood. Bob Gillan got his free pass, and, you know, I think he really upset the neighbors with what he ended up building over there. Although, and by the way, it's not at 90% occupancy. Whoever's mentioned that is incorrect. I was just over there. In fact, you know, it's more like 70 right now. There, and there's a two-bedroom unit available. I know I was inquiring for a client. So I'm pretty familiar with that facility. It's very nice, very, very nice. And it's doing a great job, but I just, I just feel like we're missing a bunch of pieces here. So if I could get some real solid numbers about that, I would feel better, a lot better. I just don't want Darien to be gung-ho development. a lot better. I just don't want Darien to be gung ho development and not sit back and, and be more thoughtful about a, a facility that fits into our neighborhood. I don't think that facility fits into our neighborhood in height and in size. And certainly the comments about traffic are incorrect. I'm going to say there's about a group of 12 or 14 of us that walk all the time. And I'm not walking right now because I had another car accident, but we walk across all Kings Highway. You know, many people walk to Trader Joe's to do groceries. There's a lot of walking happening here on Kings Highway. And we've had a lot more because of COVID. So I would like very much for people to be aware of that. And, um, I'm all for a mixed use facility. I think it's great, but let's just be cautious and just not say yes to everything. We, we scrutinized what I think is probably the best development in Darien, which is what's going on downtown for years. And I would like to see this project get probably not that level of scrutiny because we're not doing that much, but let's be as cautious with this as we were with what's arguably going to be a flagship downtown Darien. And let's just not do it to do it. I think that this overlay district allowing this height and this coverage is absolutely inappropriate and, and, and wrong for our neighborhood. And I will remind you all that when we had neighbors that protested to the Darien High School, um, at that time, Dave Campbell was our first selectman. And they got together and they bought out the squawking neighbors because it was a wealthy neighborhood. Are you going to do that for us? I don't think so. So let's be careful here, please, folks. I think you've got to respect all of us and on our feelings. And I don't feel like that's happened. I feel like there's been a lot of, uh, backroom deals that are upsetting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I could tell you one thing, that this is the first public hearing on this and the first time we saw the application. So if there's any backroom deals going on, I have no idea what you're talking about.
No, I don't mean between you. I mean, between the developer calling individuals and offering them certain things. He did that with his last development. I'll move the dumpster behind the LaRose because they're not, I don't like them. And I'll put the dumpster in the back. And I called Jeremy and said, there's a party patio. And oh yeah, there's a lot of crap that's gone on that, you know, I have litigated and I, Jeremy will tell you. I don't, I'm suing the town right now over something. I don't mind doing what I feel is the right thing. So I would, I'm asking you all to be cautious because I think there's a lot of points here that you all are just glossing over, which is, hey, let's give this guy this huge area because we need affordable housing. And I don't think that that's, why do we have a planning officer then? Why are you paying Jeremy to be our town planning officer if you're just going to let every developer come in and throw in affordable housing? Look what a hard time you gave the Stefanonis for their affordable housing. Well, you know, what's the same level of scrutiny happening here? You gave him this overlay district and you're even talking about changing, uh, it does, it's, it's not consistent. Every, every application has to be consistent.
Thank you. Uh, let me just make sure I have two questions right. On the plan that is called, um, is straight, illustrated site plan that Craig put up, the distance that's measured, I think, from your house to that back corner is 270 feet. Is that?
You have to put it up so I can see it because I can't, it's, it was, I tried to do a screenshot. I can't see it. Come on. It's tiny. I'm.
You said that, that's the distance that you don't agree with.
That's the distance I don't agree with. Look at where it's measured on the building. It should be the closest spot on the building to the closest spot on my house.
Okay. I mean, it's, there's no regulation. It's got to be 270 feet away. I think that was for a strategic purpose, but.
Well, I just, let's call a spade a spade. If he's going to measure it, let's measure it accurately. Let's do, do the closest spot. Does not seem more transparent? In your opinion?
You can make a million measurements. I'm, I'm just looking at the lowest point of what, what they measured. That's fine.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to find the point that's the closest of that building to our property.
The closest to the building to the property. Okay. Got it.
That's going to be about 30 feet.
30 feet?
Well, look at the end of my property. It's that little triangle. I have a very strange shaped piece of property. Jeremy can look at it. I can't. He knows this property.
I'm staring at it. I gotta survey.
Yeah, he can measure it. I just want to see, I want to see a more accurate measurement. And I, and I would like to know if we're going to make some affordable units there. I mean, it's not affordable, accessible units, because that's, I think, didn't you make Avalon do accessible units, Jeremy?
Accessible units is, you're talking about eight, you're talking about ADA units?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's required by, by, by federal law.
Well, do we have ADA units in this pro, in this project? We have parking.
By federal law, there has to be. And what they end up being is adaptable. They put in the units, but they don't put in the chair rails and whatnot until somebody moves into it.
And I haven't heard any mention of those.
They don't have to mention it. I, I mean, I, I work out apartment buildings all over the state and all over the, all over the region. And every apartment building has got that.
Okay. Well, so I think you have my questions. I can email them to you, Jeremy, if that's going to be easier. And I'm now I'm going to be quiet and give someone else a chance.
That'd be great. You can email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would, and would someone else like to speak to this application? Please raise your hand. Timothy Henry.
Yeah, I, um, uh, I'm Timothy Henry. I live at four Fairmead Road. Um, I know it's getting late. Uh, I just don't know if I can, I've got two young kids and I, I don't know if I can budget this amount of time for the next meeting. So, uh, hopefully not, not too long for everyone. But, um, when we last spoke about this, we were talking about a townwide zoning overlay, which would allow multifamily use on property currently zoned for office. Given the objectives of the town to diversify housing stock, it was difficult to argue against many of the elements in the plan, which is why we didn't. Some of it made a lot of sense. However, Bob Gillan's application was intentionally broad and focused on town initiatives and other D O sites rather than focusing on his ultimate goal, which was to lump his property in with the rest so he can develop an extremely dense urban apartment building on what is inarguably, in my opinion. And I would love to hear someone explain why it isn't. The most isolated and inappropriate location in the entire town for such a massive development. The presentation by a consultant and a lawyer used some ambiguous languages in the town plan to argue that they are somehow entitled to build a high density apartment complex on the fringes of our tight knit, single family community. The narrative of their plan never touches on, on how this site is good or even adequate, or if it would grow our community and make it better. They focused on the size of the structure, saying it won't exceed what is allowable in the D O zone currently. They said it would increase the town tax base, but never touched on the costs associated with population increase, number of kids in schools, additional public, public utilities, et cetera. This is a population increase after all. These are professionals paid by Rob, by Bob Gillan to cross Ts and to dot Is, and they still cannot make a cohesive argument in favor of this site. They focus on why it won't be a problem. I'm not saying that these people aren't good at their jobs. All of the speakers were very thorough. What I'm saying is that when there isn't a good, very basic argument, to put this amount of density here, even an expensive lawyer and a team of consultants can't just create it out of thin air. I want to make it very clear that my neighbors and I are not asking for anything. Bob Gillan is changing the rules so he can walk away with millions of dollars for the second time. He will tell you that he is investing millions to build the property, but this is not a donation. This is a carefully calculated investment and changing the zoning maximizes his returns by a multiple. The more units, the lower the cost per unit, the higher the returns. Jam as many units as you can and hide behind the seven affordable ones to justify it. The committee's job is to protect us from people like Bob Gillan. He does not live here, but yet claims to be our neighbor. He says he lets the neighbors use his hose and he lets the public park in unused spaces in his office building. These are not neighborly actions. I would do this for a neighbor I didn't even like. Robert Gillan has always had an agenda and his neighborliness is, has held his neighborliness in such high regard that he had his lawyer use them as a re, as a reason to like him, trust him, and to build yet another monolith on his failed office campus, capitalizing on our residential neighborhood. I would like to remind Mr. Gillan of what being a neighbor is. If you plan on doing something even modestly controversial, you speak to your neighbors first. You ask them what their thoughts are. Is this too much? Is this too big? How can I minimize the impact for you? What should it look like? You don't call a meeting with five days notice via snail mail, offering no dial in for those of us at work and for those of us who have young families. Two times you did this and I was unable to attend both. I have a two-year-old. I have a three-month-old. I have a full-time job in, in New York City. So the, I can't just show up at, at, at the drop of a hat. You help, you held a meeting with fully baked plans with no consideration for your neighbors. You have known since the last meeting that 100% of the homes on this street and over 300 more in a petition disagree with the development. So please don't consider yourself a good neighbor or someone that goes above and beyond. I fully disagree with Mr. Hennessy's assessment of your behavior. Your lack of consideration for our community during this entire process has been completely shameful. You're trying to angle into the conscience of our town with a handful of affordable apartments so you can jam 53 market units in. You'll charge whatever you wish. Your own consultant agrees with you that you'll charge a premium because this is Darien, and people will pay well in excess of what they can afford to get into our schools. The plans that Mr. Gillan put forth are effectively a set it and forget it apartment complex, a recipe for deterioration and minimal future capex investment. This is a groundbreaking development in that nothing like this has ever been done in Darien. The multifamily that exists today in our town is low density. I'm talking about town home units and two-story buildings. Look no further than East Lane, right out our front door, where Baywater at least understood that multifamily in a neighborhood should blend in with that neighborhood. Completely changing the use of an area doesn't, should not mean that you get to use all of the benefits of the current zoning regulations, including bulk, density and setbacks. That would be, and this is the big buzzword from the town plan, inappropriate. Adding 60 multifamily units increases the, the intensity in our neighborhood by an incredible amount and an infinite amount really on the weekend. There's no one in that, in that office building on Saturday and Sunday. If you had 60 multifamily units there, I mean, you, you can imagine how much activity there's going to be. There'll be people out in the courtyard, which sits in front of a concave structure that is focused on our neighborhood. That is what will impact our community the most. That is why the density matters. We take a single family neighborhood and increase the density by, by a multiple. Mr. Gillan getting richer off of our backs should not be this committee's concern. He has already successfully enriched himself from an overlay that allowed the senior facility that funnels noise and floodwater into our yards. We don't know a dime to Mr. Gillan. There are seven affordable units that would be included in this project, and I'm afraid that the need for multifamily units may cloud the judgment here. Do we need multifamily in town? Yes. Do we need more, more affordable housing options? Absolutely. Does this location make sense for the densest apartment complex in town? Absolutely not. Please do the right thing, reject these plans outright, and send Mr. Gillan and his team back to the drawing board to come up with a plan that makes sense for us. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak to this application? Mr. Passamardi?
Hi. Yeah, I'm 100% Passamardi. I live in 34 Fairmead Road.
34 Fairmead. Hold on. Thank you. Okay. Go right ahead, sir.
So basically I agree with the, most of the things that Tim and Christina said. So, you know, and I also sent a letter. Uh, so I'm just going to talk about some of the things that I noticed in the conversation that I heard today. You know, one of them was about the traffic. There's no way the trap, there's going to be minimal impact on traffic. I mean, I mean, that's what Tim talked about, right? You didn't have a housing project before. You have an office complex. It's a total different scenario, number of people, uh, the kind of people, and there'll be kids. There's a whole different, you know, thing. You, you can't just say that, you know, it's not going to be, it's not the same kind of population that exists now. Uh, you know, the kids have no space to play. I mean, they're building this building with, where the courtyard is so small. I mean, if you're going to have 30 kids, I would think there'd be at least 100 kids there. Where are they going to play? They'll be all over the sidewalks, uh, towards parklands, uh, all over parklands. And I think it's going to be very unsafe. I mean, the, you know, the traffic didn't consider all the things that really happen when you get a multifamily, uh, with 60 units. So it was a, I mean, it was a ridiculous, uh, exercise, I think. And the other thing about noise, the study that there's going to be reduced noise, that doesn't make sense. Again, you, again, you're going to have 50 kids and there's going to be less noise. Uh, all the noise is going to come towards our street, which we all already got with the, you know, uh, seniors housing. No one expected noise pollution to increase with the senior housing, but we see a lot more noise pollution because they're, they're trying to entertain them, which is perfect. But the point is, there is more noise on the weekends, uh, when they put on the mics and, and they're trying to entertain their residents. Uh, the other thing was the height of the building, which I think Christina spoke about, that is really too high for our neighborhood. Uh, and, you know, I think the commission should really look into it. Uh, and what, you know, I, I know we're going to extend this meeting to next time for public hearing, but I wasn't able to see any of the attachments, uh, on the website. There's some problems. Uh, Jeremy, you should look into it. Uh, even Christina told me, uh, that she wasn't able to get the, uh, look at the document. Just have a look at it. Anyway, um, I, I will talk to your office. I, I just started looking at when the meeting started, so I didn't have anyone to talk to about it, but we'll look at it tomorrow. Uh, and, you know, oh, one of the other issues was when we were shown this plan last time in April, uh, there was the service entrance had a gated entrance where only the, uh, fire or the, you know, service people would be able to use that road, which goes closer to Fairmead Road around the property. Now they were talking about it's going to be a signed road. You know, a signed road, no one's going to, uh, really pay attention to that. So I think it should be a gated entrance, like they proposed in the first, uh, runaround of this. Um, and, you know, and I, I think, yeah, and, yeah, those are my main points. And the other points I had was, you know, uh, which are in my letter, basically, you know, uh, that the traffic is going to be really bad. Uh, density is the big issue out here. You're going from, uh, you know, we already added 102 senior, um, you know, units in the senior housing center. Now we're going to add another 60 units and then we have another 16 units on East End, so East Lane. So we're just increasing density like there's no tomorrow out here. So I think that is, should not, you should really think about that. Uh, that's what I have to say. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Um, next, um, anyone else would like to speak to this application? Uh, there's a person named Caller five that's, that's lights turned on. If you want to speak, you're more than welcome to state your name and address, please. Okay.
I'm getting a text from someone who's trying to speak, but I guess they're not coming through on, on the mic.
Okay. Let's switch to Evan Flynn. Your mic is on. Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Evan Flynn. I live at one Fairmead.
Welcome.
Bro, thank you. Um, I'm super nervous. This is not my thing. Um, my neighbors are, and you guys are way more intelligent than I am. And I'm intimidated and this process is intimidating. And I can, um, tell you that I, I really speak from the heart. I, 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 um, the assisted living situation, that building really burned us. We went through a lot as a, as a neighborhood. We had the noise, we had the deceit, we had, we were sold one thing. It was a totally different project. We live with the, the, we live with the highway noise, which bounces off the building differently. We live with the water, the drainage, we live with the litter, we, we live with the traffic. And I love, I like, I totally get the, the. We, we live with the traffic and I love, I like, I totally get the, the analytics and I get that the developer is always presenting the aerial view, but we live, our, the neighbors live on ground level. Like we are here on, on the ground and we, please listen to us. We get it day in and day out. We are, we're not like being phony about this or faking it. We really do get it and, um, I, I cannot tell you how much that building has impacted us and how scared we are for the new building to come up. And I'm, I, I actually want to present to you because I have a little bit different perspective um, in that I actually worked at LCB for the last year and I can tell you that I was an engagement assist, assistant and I walked the residents up and down the roads. I was the person that was, was, was with the people and, um, it's not safe. And I, I, I can see there were so, like, the water, there are no gutters on that building. I can see the water just plaining off and, and, and hitting the street. There are so many things that, that I have to question, like, how did that get approved? And what confidence do we have that the next building is going to have anything better for us? So, um, I'm sorry, I'm not that articulate, but I, 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 I'm, I'm really scared. And I have to tell you that LCB is a big, really big company and we were not, we did not, like, we did not have that much time. We got a notice from Bob, hmm, I want to say less than two weeks ago. It's a busy time. We all, most of us have kids. This is a really, I, I get that you guys on the board, like, you got, it's really busy. But LCB doesn't have enough time to address this because if they know that that road in front of them is going to be pulled up and, and, um, put a new sewage line in, in it, the families are going to be insanely crazy because they're going to take their loved ones and actually have to, first of all, the ones that are there are going to have to deal with the noise and then you're, they're going to lose um, residents or potentials because no one's going to want to be in a contr, in a construction zone. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking if there's any way that we could have more time so that we could talk to LCB and, and have them be more educated on this topic. Because I really, really believe that if they knew what was actually going on, that they would, would be here and have a voice in this opposition.
Thank you. Don't be nervous. We don't bite. We're, we're regular citizens like you are too.
It's David. Yeah, but you know what, Stephen? You can say that, but you can say like, it's not in my backyard, but this is our backyard and this is where we bring our children and this is where, like, this is a community. Like, we're really tight. And I'm super grateful for this board of my neighbors. Sorry, but like, this is not right. It's sixty, sixty units? In a three point nine acre unit, like, parcel is not right. Please do the right thing.
We're looking at it. Um, with regards to LCB, they're noticed on this, on this application.
Oh, come on, they're a big company.
Wait, let me finish, let me finish. Um, the next meeting is going to be Tuesday, November ninth at seven thirty. If you worked at or used to work or still work at LCB, you're more than welcome to tell them. And if they want to send a representative, you're more than welcome to, to drive them or have them sit next to your computer.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It's, we, every once in a while, we reach out to people, make sure they got the notice and you know, if you want to tell them, this is the notice, please show up. You're more than welcome to.
Cool. Thanks.
You're welcome. Um, next, there was a caller five that Christina was trying to get to speak. Your light is still on, caller five. Okay. Um, would anybody else like to speak to this application? And again, this, this hearing's going to be, um, uh, continued on November ninth. We did almost two and a half, three hours tonight. We're getting on three hours tonight. And, and so if you didn't get a chance to speak tonight, you can speak and next time, you can speak the next time too. I see yours. One second, Christina. Or you can go to one of your neighbor's house and speak from their computer or, and I think after elections, we might be
Yeah, not too early to tell, but it'll definitely be online.
Oh, yeah, it'll be online. We, we, we are trying to get people back into Town Hall. Um, but that's not going to happen until at least November. They're rewiring the other bigger room. Um, okay. Um, Christina, you were about to say something for one of your, um, your, your
They, they gave up. There wasn't call, I don't know who caller five was, but two people were trying to get in. You know what? They're just exhausted. It's late. They've got to be up at five to take the train and whatever. I don't know. So, um, and, uh, but they, what they're going to do, I told them to just send Jeremy their list of comments and then so for the next meeting, maybe whoever answers those questions can, you know, have the list. I didn't know what else to say.
If someone sends in a letter, um, that, that letter gets put in the file. The letter also gets sent to the applicant and the applicant has the chance to, um, respond to it as appropriately.
And it also goes to all the commission members.
Yeah.
So someone sends a letter, we'll make copy and email it to the commission members. In addition, if anyone wants to look at the application materials, uh, they're here at Town Hall, Room two eleven. We're open eight AM to five fifteen PM, Monday through Thursday. If you want to see the hard copy of anything that's been submitted for the record.
Okay, and if you couldn't just fix whatever's online, I couldn't get in.
We will fix it.
Cool.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I think we spoke about this enough tonight. It's about ten to eleven. Um, hey Craig, we're going to, we're going to, Craig or Bill Hennessy, whoever's the lead guy. We're going to adjourn this or, um, continue the, continue the meeting to November ninth. Is there anything you want to say at this point till we move on?
I would just ask that we confirm that, you know, in continuing it till November ninth, that we announced the time, uh, Mr. Chairman, as well as confirm that this is, I think you may have already done that. You expect it to be done via the same electronic medium.
Yes, yes. It's definitely November ninth. It's definitely at seven thirty PM. It'll definitely be on go to meeting.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome. All right. Um, with that said, we're going to continue this hearing until November ninth. Um, we're going to have to get back to Mike Galante and Joe Canis to see if we're going to need you at that time, but I don't, I'm not, too early to tell. All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate all of everyone's comments and thank you for, um, paying your attention.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
You're welcome. Um, all right. Um, that's the end of the public hearing. That's the end of the meeting. And the next item on the agenda is to adjourn. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Jim Mann makes the motion. Jeff Ball makes the second. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Safe home. Thank you.